You might come from, which kind of lifts your spirits and keeps you motivated.
Without us out here, I think it'd be dark. It'd be a dark place, literally. My name is Francisco. A lot of people know me as Poncho. I work in the street maintenance department, and I am the streetlight technician for the city of Corona. I handle the maintenance and the repair of streetlights in Corona. We have approximately around 12,000 streetlights, and this is where I do my work. The favorite part about my job, being able to see my work afterwards and knowing that I'm lighting up this city, I'm the one that maintaining them or repairing them, and with the help of my teams and my coworkers, of course. Yeah, no, I enjoy, I love working for the city of Corona because, one, I've been here for so long already that it's kind of my second home. The residents are great. I can see how the city and employees take pride in what they do for the residents.
Hold on, guys. Our seniors deal with a lot of problems, physically, mentally. To me, it's very rewarding to be able to provide those services to them. Hold on, guys. I really don't know where our seniors would be. Like, I think they would be so depressed. I kid you not. It's like, depression and these seniors, it's something that really is happening every day, you know, and just them having that connection with another senior is crucial to them, you know. My name is Jaclyn Wilson, and I'm a senior community service leader. Our seniors deal with a lot of problems, physically, mentally. To me, it's very rewarding to be able to provide those services to them. This center creates a family atmosphere. The first thing that you feel once you enter these doors is just people smiling at you, you know, you feel, you just feel family. We want you to be here, you know, and we want you to take advantage of what the city is providing for you, lunch programs, activities, you know, for your mental health, physical health. But I enjoy the most to see transformations. I've seen seniors come in with tears in their face, and then a year from now, you see them and they're line dancing. They're attending our parties, they are all dressed up, you know, with big smiles, and that's the most beautiful thing I can witness. I have grown a lot. I feel like I have more patience now. It makes me see the city I live in a different way. I love...
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. We're going to start off with the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to call Fernando Junior Murillo up, and he's going to lead us in the pledge. Would you please stand?
Okay. Everyone, we are going to begin right after you take off your hats, please. Thank you. Starting in three, two, one. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Nicely done, buddy. All right, I got a certificate for you, for you being so generous and nice to do that for us. What school are you going to?
I'm going to Gerson Elementary School.
Gerson, are you off right now?
I'm going to St. Mo's School.
Oh, are you in trouble?
No.
All right. What grade are you going into?
I'm going into sixth.
All right, cool. Thank you very much. Let's take a picture, and then you can hold this. Okay, just like that. All right, everybody, we are going to convene an open session. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Ms. Edwards, would you please read the special instructions?
Yes. Individuals wishing to address the city council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to city clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the city council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. For those needing Spanish interpretation for agenda item 5.1, listening devices are available. If you would like to use one, please come see city clerk staff. Also, if you would like to provide public comment during the item, staff is available to assist with interpretation. Para los que necesiten traducción en español para el tema 5.1, hay aparatos disponibles. Si necesitas uno, por favor acérquese con la persona de la Secretaria Mundial. Si desea hacer comentario público durante este tema, estamos disponibles para ayudarle con la traducción. Thank you, mayor.
Muy bien, mi amiga. Very nice. Jim, you could have done that in Spanish.
Totally could have done that.
All right, I'm going to move up a couple items really quick, because they're super quick items. That would be item 14.1, which is the appointment to the Historic Preservation Board, and that, one of the appointments is mine. I am announcing Mr. Richard Nguyen, a longtime Corona resident. Rich, please stand. He's also one of our historians here in this community, knows more about it than most people. So, Rich, congratulations, and thank you for volunteering for that position. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards on this issue?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards, but we do need a motion for this item.
Okay, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say we need a vote on it.
See?
Okay.
See?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second it? Please vote.
It went blank.
Uh-oh, what happened?
Aye.
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 And an aye.
Aye.
That item passes five, though. Okay, we have just one more here. Appointment to Historic Preservation Board. Councilman Speak, will you please announce your appointment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor to nominate Mallory Gonzalez to serve... Mallory, are you here? I think she said she was going to have a little bit of trouble getting here, but to serve on Corona's, our very first Historic Preservation Board, a lifelong Coronan, Mallory brings not only a deep local roots where she's, because she's lived here her whole life, she also has an impressive academic background in history, holding a bachelor's in history from UC Santa Barbara and a master's in history from Harvard. Mallory's professional and volunteer experiences reflect a steadfast commitment to preserving the stories and structures that define our collective identity. Her previous service with the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation and the Boston West End Preservation Committee speaks to her breadth of knowledge and dedication to the field. Mallory believes in the importance of honoring our past while supporting thoughtful, sustainable growth. Her personal connection to our city gives her a unique perspective and a strong sense of responsibility in helping shape its future. I'm confident with her insight, passion, integrity. She will make a valuable addition to the Historic Preservation Board. I look forward to meaningful contributions she will be making protecting the places that we all care about. Thank you very much.
Remember, speak. Appreciate that. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public on that appointment?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second from somebody?
Second to approve.
Okay. Where's Jackie? Please vote with an aye or an nay.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye, aye, aye. And we're still down on the computer, okay?
And the item passes.
All right. All right, now, for what most of you are here for, item five, which is a presentation updating on our rent stabilization ordinance. I'd like to invite Karen Roper, our Housing and Home Solutions manager, and Dominique Clark of RSG to the podium to provide the presentation.
Is it that one?
No. Is yours up?
Mine is up.
Oh, let me go to presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Karen Roper, privileged of serving as the Housing and Home Solutions...
Can you speak up a little closer? Maybe get it... There you go.
Usually it is not a problem to hear Karen Roper.
I know. What was going on there?
So, council members, before we dive into the presentation, I would like to take a few moments to acknowledge the Rent Stabilization Ordinance team. You all know that it takes a team to bring something to fruition. So first, what I would like to do is to thank the council ad hoc committee members, Vice Mayor Jackie Casillas, and Councilmember West Speak, who have been an important part of this team effort. I would also like to thank our city attorney team, Dean Durlith and Jamie Raymond. Third, I'd like to thank our consultant team, RSG, Dominique Clark and Tara Matthews, who's not here but has been at the table with us. Also, because we do have translation services tonight that are available simultaneous, I would like to thank and acknowledge not only Sylvia Edwards, our city clerk, and Christian Duarte, but in the back, we have Ruby Vargas from Community Services, and Vanessa Medina and Jennifer of my team that are available to provide translation throughout the entire portion of this presentation. And of course, April of my team, who did so much to help with logistics with all of the community meetings. And I also would just like to thank your council for directing the ad hoc committee and staff to work together to convene community meetings with the park owners, with the homeowners. It's been such a joy to get to meet them and collaborate with them so that we could discuss possibilities and options that are going to be presented before you tonight. I am going to handle the first slide here. So, the ask. We are requesting the city council to consider and confirm direction provided on desired mobile home rent stabilization ordinance components during the September 26th Fall Council Workshop. We are requesting council provide direction on whether to include an in-lu agreement option in the mobile home rent stabilization ordinance and the desired components of an agreement. And third, to provide staff direction on next steps to finalize rent stabilization ordinance and/or in-lu agreement, and return to city council for final approval. And to the ladies that are translating, I'm sorry, I went too fast, but I know that Dominique is going to do a better job. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dominique to present the rest of the presentation to your city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council.
Welcome, Dominique.
Thank you. As was mentioned, my name is Dominique Clark. I'm with RSG. We are a consulting firm. We are retained to assist the city in establishing a rent stabilization program for mobile home parks in the city. And I do want to say that at times I will use the acronym RSO. Instead of rent stabilization ordinance, I'll use them interchangeably. And as Karen mentioned, I will do my best to speak at a slow enough pace for the translators to simultaneously translate what I'm saying into Spanish. So there are four components of the presentation. The first is going to be a brief section on background, just so that everyone in the room, including the public, will be on the same page as to what steps the city has taken to get us here to where we are tonight. Second, I will briefly summarize the direction that this council gave staff at the September 2024 Fall Policy Workshop about how to structure the rent stabilization ordinance. Third will be the bulk of my presentation, which will be talking about this concept of an in-lu agreement. And then fourth, I will briefly talk about some administrative considerations for both the RSO and the in-lu agreement. So first, I'll start with background. In 2017, the mobile home residence's initial petition for rent stabilization was mitigated by a private agreement between Corona La Linda Park ownership and residents. Five years later, in June 2022, in response to a new request by mobile home residents for a rent stabilization ordinance, the council directed staff to develop an ordinance and program. A few months later, in November 2022, city council directed staff to analyze the mobile home parks in the city to determine if a legitimate government interest exists for rent stabilization. The legitimate government interest piece is important because, under the U.S. and California Constitution, any regulation that affects property rights, such as rent stabilization, must be related to a legitimate government interest. So before proceeding, the city council directed staff to ensure that that interest existed, to comply with state and federal law. In order to do that, the city retained my firm, RSG, to determine whether the city has a legitimate government interest, and we completed what I'm calling the Phase One Study about that very topic. Then in October 2023, that Phase One Study was completed, and in that same month, RSG presented our findings of the study to this council, which was that a legitimate government interest in establishing a rent stabilization program did exist. At that point, city council directed staff to proceed with establishing a local rent stabilization ordinance and program. Following that meeting, RSG was retained to complete what I'm calling a Phase Two Study, in which we summarized the various components of a rent stabilization program that the city council may consider in the adoption of an ordinance based on best practices by other jurisdictions that have similar programs. In August 2024, that Phase Two Study was completed in preparation for the September Fall Policy Workshop. At the Fall Policy Workshop, we presented those findings, and city council directed staff to move forward with a mobile home rent stabilization ordinance. At that same meeting during public comments, a representative of park owners urged the city council to consider an in-lu agreement, which would, according to them, save a lot of time and expense for both the city and park ownership and the residents. The idea is that an in-lu agreement instead of, would be an alternative to a rent stabilization ordinance, or in addition to the ordinance. And instead of, under the ordinance, the park owners having to come to the city for approval before implementing any rent increase, they would instead have this legally binding agreement, which would lay out the limits by which park owners can increase rents each year. And the idea is that because the city would be less involved in the approval process, that would significantly reduce the administrative burden. So based on that comment, the city council directed staff to explore this idea of an in-lu agreement. And then a couple months later, in November 2024, the city council, in a closed session, created an ad hoc committee to further analyze this in-lu concept and to gather information from the community. The ad hoc committee was the two members that Karen mentioned earlier, Vice Mayor Casillas and Councilman Speak. And then in March and April 2025, the ad hoc committee held four workshops, two for the park owners and two for the homeowners. And the purpose of the meeting was to collect feedback on this in-lu agreement concept. At the two park owner workshops, representatives of nine of the 10 parks that would be subject to the ordinance and/or in-lu agreement attended. At the two homeowner workshops, 40 residents and representatives attended. Some residents attended both meetings, but for the purposes of this headcount, we only included, we only counted them one time. So now I will provide some, a brief summary of the direction that we were given by this council in September regarding the rent stabilization ordinance. This slide summarizes all the direction we were given. So at the top, the rent limits that we were directed was to limit the annual inflationary rent increase to 75% of the change in CPI capped at 5%. CPI stands for Consumer Price Index, and it is the U.S. government's official measurement of inflation. Sometimes this is called a CPI rent increase, sometimes it's called an inflationary rent increase. I might use the terms interchangeably. They're the same thing. The second row talks about vacancy control, which is how much can park owners increase rents when a household moves out of the park and a new household moves in? We were directed to include some form of vacancy control in the ordinance and to allow rents to be increased up to 3% to 10% upon turnover. I have highlighted up to 3% to 10% in red, just to point out to council that we would still need direction on the exact percentage. The third item was on petitions, and we were directed to include all types of petitions. So a property owner or a park owner would have to submit a petition to the city anytime they wanted to increase rents, whether that be a CPI rent increase, or a capital improvement rent increase, or a fair return rent increase, which is required to protect their constitutional right to earn a fair return on their investment. And there would also be a tenant or homeowner petition option, where homeowners could submit a petition to request a rent decrease or rent freeze in any cases of a decrease in services or amenities. Fourth, regarding petition fees, jurisdictions with rent stabilization ordinances handle petition fees generally one of two ways. They either bake the petition fees into the annual registration fees, assuming that all park owners are going to submit petitions from time to time, or other jurisdictions instead charge a park owner every time they come in for a petition, to make sure that the people who come, the owners who come in the most often pay the most fees. And we were directed to go with that latter approach and to allow 50% of those petition fees to be passed through to residents. Next, regarding oversight and petition authority, council directed to establish program staff at the city as the Oversight and Petitions Authority with the support of consultants, and any appeals of decisions would go to an outside hearing officer. Next, regarding appeals of decisions, appeals would be processed pursuant to Section 1.09 of the Municipal Code. Regarding annual registration, the city would require that all park owners, at the beginning of the program, submit rent rolls to show how much rent they're charging at each space. And then anytime they want to increase rents according to the inflationary rent increase limit, they would have to submit a CPI petition, and the city would also utilize resident noticing to promote program compliance. Additionally, anytime there was turnover of spaces, so when one household moves in, another one moves, one household moves out, another household moves in, owners would be, park owners would be required to notify the city so that the city could confirm that the new rents for that new household complies with the vacancy control limits. Registration fees would be charged annually to help cover the cost of the program. Administrative penalties would be levied in compliance with the existing administrative citation process that's already outlined in the municipal code. And if there are any instances where it became obvious that a park owner was charging excessive rents, then they would be required to pay damages three times the difference to residents. And then finally, some jurisdictions have reactive programs, some have proactive programs. A reactive program is when a jurisdiction sets up a rent stabilization ordinance, and then other than processing petitions, they're very hands-off, and they expect that the owners are complying with ordinance unless they hear otherwise in the form of a complaint from residents. Whereas in other jurisdictions with more proactive programs, they're doing some form of enforcement and compliance monitoring year-round, and they're not only addressing issues, but they're anticipating issues. And that type of program, a proactive program, offers more protections to residents, but it's obviously much more expensive in terms of administrative costs. City council directed us to move forward with setting up a proactive program. So with that, I will go into the bulk of my presentation, which is talking about this in-lu agreement option. There's a lot of discussion and questions that come up when talking about the in-lu agreement option, but RSG, along with staff and legal counsel, distilled all of the topics that we thought were key to five key topics, and we felt that these five key topics covered the biggest issues. We presented these five key topics at those workshops that I mentioned, the ones for the park owners and for the homeowners. We presented it the same exact way. And in those workshops, for each of the key topics, we presented what we called an initial idea, just to give both groups something to react to in order to provide feedback. So I'll go through each of the five key topics, and I will present the initial idea that was communicated at those workshops. Then I'll summarize the feedback that we received from the park owner group and the homeowner group, and then I will list one or more points on which city council will need to make a decision related to that topic. Once I'm done with the five key topics, there's also a slide on other considerations, just to list briefly some other feedback that we got from both groups that doesn't fit neatly into one of the five key topics. So the first of the five key topics in relation to the in-lu agreement is the in-lu agreement framework. So this is the idea that was communicated in the workshops, is that we could include an option in the rent stabilization ordinance for park owners to execute an in-lu agreement rather than be subject to the ordinance. So we got feedback from both the homeowner group and the park owner group. In order to get feedback from all the homeowners, as I mentioned, there were 40 residents at the meetings, we asked them to write down their feedback. That way, we could get their feedback in their own words, and everyone would hopefully feel comfortable in providing their feedback, and they were able to give their feedback in both English and Spanish. Thirty of the residents gave us comments that directly said whether they were in support of or in opposition to the in-lu agreement. Because we got 30, we thought that was a big enough sample size to just present percentages in order to more easily show the trends. So 87% of the 30 residents who gave comments were in opposition to an in-lu agreement, while 13% were in support. Some concerns that were expressed on this issue, one was the concern of the lack of city oversight, since under an in-lu agreement, the city would be less involved, or at least that's the concept that was originally discussed. The second concern that was expressed was confusion about the origin of the in-lu agreement concept. As I mentioned in the background section, it's been many, many years of talking about the rent stabilization ordinance, but residents were confused about where this idea of an in-lu agreement came up, since it wasn't discussed with them at least years ago, when these discussions started. On the park owner's side, one of the biggest concerns was the length of the in-lu agreement. We communicated that the agreement could be five years, and some were concerned that a five-year term would be too short, and they would prefer seven to 10 years, just to give them more stability and knowing what to expect. Others were fine with a five-year term, so it wasn't unanimous, but some were concerned that five years would be too short. Another concern is what would happen if a park is sold? Would that new owner automatically be subject to the in-lu agreement because the previous owner was, or would they have an opportunity to switch to being subject to the ordinance? So that was another question that came up. Decision points on this issue for city council to address are, one, whether to include an in-lu agreement option in the RSO at all. Two, whether the in-lu agreement would run with the land in the event of a sale. So if it would run with the land, then a new owner would be subject to the agreement automatically for the rest of that term. And third, what would the length of the agreement term be? Five years, seven years, 10 years, or something else? So the second key issue was the annual CPI rent adjustment. So as a reminder, under the ordinance, the rent stabilization ordinance, the direction we were given by city council was that the annual rent increase would be 75% of the change in CPI capped at 5%. The initial idea that was conveyed at the workshops, just as an example, is that the annual CPI rent adjustment limit could be equal to 100% of the change in CPI capped at 4%. The homeowner feedback is shown here. Again, we got comments from 30 people directly about what type of cap they would be in support of. The overwhelming majority supported a 2% rent cap, with some specifying that they wanted the CPI to be limited to 75% of CPI. 20% supported a 3% rent cap, and then there were a few that varied, some said 4% or 2.7%. One homeowner directly expressed opposition to a rent increase floor. So a rent increase floor would be every single year, no matter how much inflation is, owners would be guaranteed to at least get X%. So let's say 3% each year. So even in years with low inflation, like 2%, they would still be guaranteed 3%. And this homeowner was saying that they would be opposed to a rent increase floor. On the park owner's side, we got three main points of feedback. One is that the... One is that the limits under the in-lu agreement should be higher than what's in the rent stabilization ordinance to incentivize the park owners to want to execute the in-lu agreement, since it does save significant time and cost for everyone. Secondly, the feedback we got was to set the limit at 100% of CPI with a 3% floor and an 8% cap. And then another comment was to, again, allow a rent increase floor, but also rent banking to make up for years with low inflation. So rent banking means that in the years where inflation, so for example, the initial idea was that the rent increase limit would be capped at 4%. So in years where inflation was higher, so say rent, the inflation was 6%, but they would only get 4%. So the idea is they could bank that 2% for the years where the inflation is low, and they could kind of dig into that past rent banking as a credit, and that way make up for years with low inflation and with the idea that hopefully it would balance out. So the decision points here for city council to discuss are, one, what should the CPI limit be under the in-lu agreement? Two, what should the rent increase cap be? What should the rent increase floor be? And then finally, should rent banking be allowable? The third factor is vacancy control or vacancy decontrol. So the initial idea that was floated at these workshops was that park owners would be able to increase rents to whatever the market will bear whenever someone moves out and a new household moves in. The homeowner feedback that we received is shown here. So six homeowners expressed concerns about how that would affect the value of their coaches. So if I'm a mobile homeowner and I'm selling my coach, theoretically, I can sell my home for more if I can guarantee to a prospective buyer that their rent is not going to go up only, or it'll only go up 3% or 4%. But if I can't say what the rent will go up to, then that reduces the value of my home. So six homeowners expressed concerns about that. We didn't put percentages on this slide because I'm sure it's more than just six that were concerned about that, but it was just that six wrote it down. Additionally, six homeowners expressed support of some kind of vacancy control even under the in-lu agreement, and then one homeowner specifically said that they would be supportive of no increase upon turnover. On the park owner's side, many park owners expressed that having vacancy decontrol as part of the in-lu agreement would be a significant incentive for them to choose that in-lu agreement. Secondly, one park owner representative said that vacancy decontrol encourages healthy sales activity, which benefits both park owners and homeowners. And then nearly all of the park owners expressed that vacancy control would not address increases in operating expenses, since turnover rate is so low. So the rate at which households are moving out and new households are moving in is very low at the parks, so these opportunities when they would be able to increase their rents to market rate would be very few and far between. So they're saying that it wouldn't help them with their operating expenses increasing each year. So the decision points here are that, one, whether the city council wants to regulate rates upon turnover or say that they can increase it to market, and if you do want to regulate the increases, we would have to determine how much would be allowable. The fourth key point is regarding fair return rent increases. So every single jurisdiction that has a rent stabilization ordinance has to have a process by which park owners can come to the jurisdiction and say that their limits are preventing them from earning a fair return, if that's the case. And that's called, typically called, a fair return rent increase process. And in those cases, they would have to open up their books and show their park income and park expenses so that the city or their consultants can determine whether that is the case. And if it is determined that it's true that the limits are preventing them from earning a fair return, then the city would have to approve a higher rent increase, higher than those CPI rent increase limits, in order to ensure that they receive a fair return. And that's in order to protect their constitutional right to earn a fair return on investment. So our understanding is that the park owners, at least what was expressed in these meetings, is that they would be willing to eliminate that process for a fair return under the in-lu agreement, provided that they get the vacancy decontrols that I just spoke about. And if that's the case, because they're entering this agreement voluntarily, my understanding is that would not violate their constitutional right to a fair return on investment. So the homeowner feedback that we received here is three homeowners expressed concerns that eliminating that process of the fair return petition would also eliminate their ability to petition for a rent decrease or rent freeze in the event of a reduction in services or amenities. We conveyed that likely if fair returns were off the table, then homeowner petitions would also be off the table. That's not set in stone, but it was something that was discussed in the meetings, and those homeowners expressed concerns about losing that right. And then one homeowner expressed a preference for the in-lu agreement over the park owner being able to submit a fair return rent increase every year. On the park owner's side, they made it very clear that a 4% annual CPI rent increase, which would be allowed under that inflationary rent increase limit, would not account for rapidly rising costs. So for example, property insurance, everyone's been talking about how much property insurance is skyrocketing in California, so that affects mobile home park owners as well. And if property insurance increased significantly, and the limit to increase rents based on inflation is only 4%, then that would pose a financial strain on the park owners. So the suggestion-
Dominique, real quick.
Yes.
So if something was a lot more money than the 4%, then they would have to approach the city and say, hey, we're not getting a fair return, have to open up our books and prove it, but what's the cost associated with that?
I will get to that. And then I also want to point out that under the in-lu agreement, the idea would be to not have a fair return process at all. So that would be their concern, is there would be no way to ask for that increase.
But under the RSO-
Right, under the RSO.
Then they could ask for it every single year.
They could, correct.
And cost potentially the homeowner more money than if they-
Correct, yes. So at the, towards the end of the presentation, I have some estimates of how much each of the petitions would cost.
I'll shut up and let you finish. Thanks.
I appreciate the enthusiasm. But yeah, that's a really good question, so I will definitely cover that. So then there is a suggestion that even under the in-lu agreement, since there would be no fair return option, there would, should be some kind of process perhaps where park owners can pass through certain costs. So maybe the city could have a clause that says if operating expenses exceed a certain percentage, then they can go through some kind of approval process. That's the idea. I will say that they wouldn't open up all their books, so they would just focus on the expenses that are increasing. There might be some other expenses that are decreasing, we wouldn't be able to see that, we would just be looking at the ones that they present. And then the second comment was, or suggestion, was that the city should include a clause to allow rent increases beyond the cap during emergencies or natural disasters. So the decision points here is pretty simple. It's either do we eliminate the fair return petition process or not? And then if we eliminate the fair return petition process, how will these unexpected or exorbitant cost increases be handled? And we talk about that more on the final key point, which is automatic pass-through rent increases. So there's a number of expenses that can pop up that wouldn't be covered under the annual inflationary rent increase. So those are things like capital improvements. So if a park adds a new amenity to a park, so for example, maybe they add a pool and there wasn't one before, or if they do a capital replacement, there was a pool, but it's getting old and they have to rehab it, those kind of expenses would not be captured in the 4% limit. Also, property taxes, particularly when a park changes hands and a new park owner comes in and buys a park, the property will be reassessed, and the property taxes can increase significantly at that point. So that would not be covered under the 4% limit. And then also various government fees and assessments that could be popped up. So in the workshops, we, the initial idea that we communicated was to allow some kind of process to pass these costs through to the homeowners, so as not to cause financial strain on the park owners. So the homeowner feedback that we got, so we communicated that some jurisdictions who have rent stabilization ordinances, even under the ordinance, not even in a in-lu agreement, even under the ordinance, if a park owner wants to pass through a capital improvement, they have to go to the homeowners first before starting the work to get a vote to see, do you even want this capital improvement? Do you want a pool? Because maybe they don't want a pool, and so then they don't want to pay for the pool. So 17 homeowners supported the idea of a homeowner vote on capital improvements prior to starting work. And some concerns that were expressed on this issue by the homeowners was they wanted a rent increase limit for the pass-throughs. So they didn't want a situation where in one year, a homeowner passes through a capital improvement and a capital replacement and a property taxes because there's a new owner. They didn't want all these fees to stack up to a point that it became burdensome on them. Another recommendation was to define what eligible government fees and assessments were. A third comment was that any expenditures that the park owner is claiming should be subject to homeowner review. They should have to open up their books, at least for those items, and let homeowners review the invoices, for example. And then finally, there was a question from the homeowners. One homeowner asked, why don't park owners just budget for capital improvements rather than having to pass through these through as a big one-time cost? On the park owner's side, there was a recommendation to allow automatic pass-throughs for capital replacements. So some of the park owners were okay with this idea of a vote for capital improvements, meaning a new amenity, but if it's concerning a replacement, rehabbing an existing amenity, their suggestion was to not have to go to a vote, because the thought is if something desperately needs to be replaced, and they have to go to the homeowners and the homeowners vote, they don't vote to do the work, the work still needs to be done, or if not, it's going to negatively impact the value of the park. And then another concern again was these insurance cost increases. If that has to go through a resident vote, residents may not vote for it, but it still needs to be paid. So other ideas that were floated around was to have a meet and confer in those cases instead of a vote. So have a resident meeting and at least give the residents an opportunity to hear about the improvements, why they're, why they are needed, why they are, what they cost. And then another point was that many of the parks in the city are aging, and so they are going to require substantial reinvestment in the short term. The park owners also said that they, again, they would be open to a homeowner approval for new capital improvements, but they thought that the threshold of getting majority approval from the homeowners would be too high, particularly because not all homeowners would participate in the vote. There might be some homeowners that just don't want to participate or don't participate for whatever reason, so they aimed, they suggested having a lower threshold of 33% was one idea that was thrown out. And then another comment was they're concerned that if property taxes can't be, the property tax increases can't be passed through, if the park is sold, that's going to negatively impact the value of the park and make it harder for them to sell their park. So that's a major concern.
Dominique, question about the voting threshold. Where you see votes for these type of things, is it a majority of the, is it a majority of the people who vote, or is it a majority of the homeowners in the park?
That's a good question. Where I've seen it, it's the majority of all homeowners in the park. So all spaces in the park, at least one adult from each space has to, you have to get a vote from, one adult from more than 50% of the spaces. So not just of the people who vote.
Gotcha.
That's a good question. So the decision points on this topic is which cost can be passed through to homeowners, what should be the approval process, if any, for those pass-throughs, and whether homeowner votes are required, and if so, what is the threshold? Okay, so we got through all five of the key topics. Here, just some other comments that were made by both groups that I wanted to point out, even though they don't fit in any of the other topics. So the homeowners stated, as was mentioned earlier, that it's hard to compare the in-lu agreement to the RSO without knowing the fees, so we'll get to that next. And then also, the homeowners wanted to communicate that many of the residents in these parks are seniors and retirees on fixed incomes. So their incomes are limited to maybe the cost of living adjustment for social security, and so they wanted the city council to keep that in mind in setting whatever limits they set. And then on the park owner's side, two comments were that there is a need for funds to assist homeowners when they have issues paying the rent, and also when they have issues keeping up with maintenance of their home. And then secondly, at least one park owner asked the question, could the in-lu agreement be set up indefinitely instead of having an RSO at all? So now we'll get into administrative considerations for both the RSO and in-lu agreement. This is the last section. So the rent stabilization program, as I mentioned, is more proactive. It requires the city staff to be regularly engaging with both park owners and homeowners. It requires them to be enforcing the program, making sure both owners, park owners and homeowners are educated. It requires a lot of noticing, whereas under the in-lu agreement, this, it would create this contractual obligation between the city and each park owner who is willing to execute the agreement. The idea that was mentioned in the September fall workshop was that we would have both an RSO and an in-lu agreement, and each park owner could choose which one they wanted to be subject to. That wasn't set in stone, but that was just an idea that was suggested. Even under the in-lu agreement, though, city staff would still need to educate homeowners to make sure they're aware of what the in-lu agreement says if their park owner is subject to that in-lu agreement, so that they know to notify the city if they're concerned that the owner of their park is not complying with it. So there still would be some administrative burden, but not nearly as much as under a rent stabilization program. And then the second row in the table just talks about how under a rent stabilization program, staff would have to be very involved in anticipating issues and addressing issues, whereas under the in-lu agreement, it would be up to the city council to determine the level of the city's oversight of each park owner's compliance, with the understanding that the more oversight the city, the city has to provide, the higher the program costs are going to be. And then finally, the bottom row talks about petitions. So under the rent stabilization program, city council directed us to have every single type of petition, which I already discussed. So in many jurisdictions, when a rent stabilization program is first established, there are a lot of petitions, particularly fair return petitions. Fair return petitions are the petitions that take the longest amount of time to process, and they're the most expensive, because it requires, again, the park owners opening up their books, showing all of their income, all of their expenses for both the base year and the current year, and someone has to review all of that information. So it takes a lot of time and money to do that. And initially, when a program is new, it's not uncommon for many park owners to come in and ask for a fair return rent increase, because they want to be caught up as much as possible, and then over time, it usually decreases. Also, I would say that in some jurisdictions, there might be one or two park owners that submit a fair return petition often, whereas the other ones don't. So there's one jurisdiction where I work in, and only one park owner comes in every single year like clockwork, and the others never come in because they're fine with the CPI increase, or it's not worth the time and hassle to them to complete the process. So it's something to keep in mind. Whereas under the in-lu agreement, all of those petitions would be eliminated. There would be no CPI petition because there's this contractual obligation, so it would be expected that the park owners would abide by that agreement. However, as we mentioned, if you allow some pass-throughs to homeowners, that would require some type of approval process. So now we'll get into costs of the programs. So the city has engaged a separate consultant, which is Will Dan, not RSG, to conduct a comprehensive fee study, but this won't happen until after the ordinance and/or the in-lu agreements are drafted, and we know exactly what the program is going to entail. So once those documents are drafted, the fee study will be complete, and the fee study will be brought again to city council for adoption. And then the public will have an opportunity at that time to provide comments on the study. And then city council would presumably adopt the final fee schedule and determine if and to what extent fees would be split between the park owner and the homeowner. So jurisdictions with rent stabilization programs usually split the costs, like the city might bear some of the cost- Like, the city might bear some of the cost, the park owners will bear some of the cost, homeowners will bear some of that cost. And that hasn't been decided here yet. So our understanding is that city council would make that decision once the fee study is done. On the next slide, we were asked to provide some high-level estimates based on what we know today of how much these programs would cost. I want to caution that this is very preliminary information. It's likely to change. We don't even know if we're going to have an in-lie agreement yet. We don't know exactly what the program would entail. But we wanted to provide some numbers just for the sake of illustration and for the conversation today. So I'm presenting numbers. It makes me nervous to present numbers that aren't final, but we're all of the understanding these are very much estimates. So under the rent stabilization program, the annual registration fees, we estimate, would be about $100 per space per year, and that would help cover the cost of the program. Whereas under the in-lie agreement, it would be about $70 per space per year. So it would be lower than under the program because they would require less oversight from the city. But it would still be a cost because the city would still have some level of involvement. This cost can change a lot depending on what city council determines the level of oversight should be. And then as far as the CPI or inflationary petition, under the rent stabilization program, we are estimating it would be about $1,500 per petition. For the in-lie agreement, there would be no CPI petition. For the capital improvement petition or the pass-through review, whatever costs you're allowing them to pass through to homeowners, if there's some kind of review process, under the rent stabilization program, that would cost about $17,000 per petition. Whereas under the in-lie agreement, it would be a much shorter process, just some kind of quicker approval process. So the cost would be about half that at $8,500 per view. Fair return petitions, as I mentioned, are the most time-consuming and costly. And we're estimating approximately $36,000 per petition. And in other jurisdictions I work with, that number is right on par. There's cities where they have to pay $30,000 to $40,000 just to get the city to start processing the petition. Whereas under the in-lie agreement, there would be no fair return petition. And then the homeowner petition would be about $9,000 per petition. I do want to clarify that it's our understanding that the homeowner would not pay for that. The city would absorb a good chunk of that, if not almost all of that cost. Typically, in other jurisdictions, if they have a homeowner or tenant petition, the cost might be $25 or $50. And then that would not be applicable under the in-lie agreement because that would be off the table. So again, these are just preliminary estimates intended for illustrative purposes only. And these numbers would have to be completely revisited once the comprehensive fee study is completed. And I also want to note that these estimates assume that the city would primarily rely on consultants to administer the program. If the city would be handling most of the work in-house, the cost could be dramatically lower, potentially. But then another thing to keep in mind is consultants work on an hourly rate, whereas city staff, you would have to keep them regardless of how many petitions you have.
Dominique?
Yes.
So that $36,000 for a fair return. So that would be the cost to the park owners who would then just turn around and charge the homeowners?
It depends on what city council wants. So there's some jurisdictions where the city absorbs that cost. There's some jurisdictions where 100% can be passed through to residents. And there's some jurisdictions where they split it 50/50. So it depends on how you set it up.
OK, thank you.
Sure. And then I also wanted to point out that overhead costs are not included in the above estimates. And I should also mention that appeals costs are not included. So if you have a petition and then they appeal the decision, that's a whole nother cost that would have to be added. OK, I think I am done with my presentation. Thank you for everyone's patience. And my understanding is we're going to skip questions right now. And then I'm just going to put this slide up again to remind city council what the ask is, which is really number two and number three, to provide direction on whether to include an in-lie agreement option, and if so, what the components of that agreement would be. And then to provide direction on the next steps to move towards finalizing a rent stabilization ordinance and/or in-lie agreement so we can return to city council for final approval. Thank you.
OK, thank you so much. I know we're going to have a lot of questions, but let's first go to the public. Ms. Edwards, I'm assuming we have a few speaker cards?
Mayor, yes. We received two letters that was distributed to the council and will be part of the record. One letter was for Manufactured Housing Educational Trust, and the second was from Western Manufacturing Housing Communities. And we have 19 speaker cards.
OK, and thank you for providing the hard copies up here as well. OK, so we have 19 speakers so far. If you want to just approach the microphone there, the podium? And just take, yes, sir?
You think, I'm just thinking, if Jackie thinks it would be OK for us to give our feedback before we hear the order, would you like to do it either way?
I don't really, I don't really care.
I'd like to hear the residents first. I'd like the residents, yeah.
You want the residents first?
I think there's lots of questions and hopefully, maybe we can take some notes and answer from those two.
And Ms. Cassius, did you say you wanted to update? The ad hoc doesn't want to update first.
No, I'd like to hear the residents' comments.
Let's do that. So 19 speakers. Who's going to go first?
Ready, set, go.
I promise we won't bite.
Tom does, but only on Wednesdays.
He's not feeling good enough to bite right now.
This is true.
Good evening, everyone. Let me see, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Lydia from Corona Lallita Mobile Home Park, and I'm representing many of the residents here of Mobile Home Parks. I have a PowerPoint that I wanted to show to you guys, and I believe every one of you have a copy of it so you can follow with us. We started this process of requesting Mobile Home Parks for 10 years. This started in 2015, not 2017. 2015, we started fighting, and a lot of you guys are very familiar with our faces. I'm going to start my PowerPoint, and then I'm going to have these other residents help me with it. If you can see, there's a homeless man on my first page. And right now, I have a resident that is homeless as we speak, and it breaks my heart. It's been such a hard time all these years, plus two more, that you guys are taking the time to do all this. And I know it's not an easy task, but it really grieves me to see my neighbors being on the street. It just affects me emotionally, I'm sorry. So manufactured homes are essential to Corona's economy. Manufactured home parks are neighborhoods of Corona just like any other neighborhood. Mobile home park owners in parks pay taxes on their property just like any other homeowners in Corona. Corona cannot afford to enable homelessness for its tax-paying citizens who currently contribute over $1 million every year. Corona only identifies 1,824 affordable housing units and fails to include manufactured homes in their inventory. If Corona includes manufactured homes in their inventory, that equals 3,268 total homes meeting the state definition of affordable housing. Manufactured homes represent 44.2% of all Corona's affordable housing. Manufactured homeowners pay average property taxes to the tune of $950 annually. When rents go up, the value of the homes go down. That's very clear. When rents go up, that 1,444 park resident discretionary, sorry, spending money decreases impacting the local economy. Corona is currently failing to meet the state mandated of affordable housing projections. Adding the 44.2% of mobile homes will help to meet the mandate, but at the current rate of lot rent increases, they are eroding the affordability factor. City council members are obligated not just to increase affordable housing but to preserve existing affordability. And I will, you know, really looking forward to, you guys see this and not just read it, but actually feel it, you know, really like, you know, like a part of the city. Because I just don't understand how, you know, this has been taking so long. And RSG was paid hundreds of dollars, and they're allowed to present a PowerPoint. And I've been working for over 10 years for free, and I'm not allowed to have time for a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Huesner, Corona Linda Mobile Home Park. I'm going to do the second phase of what we presented. How unstable rent increases in mobile home parks impact Corona's local economy. Number five, as lot rents increase without imposing a rent stabilization ordinance now, 1,444 park residents are at risk of homelessness. As the rent increases, more homeowners must seek social services, increasing the local burden. Number six, every time park owners increase lot rents, homeowners discretionary income decreases. That means over 1,444 park residents in Corona can no longer afford to support the local economy by going to restaurants, shops, entertainment, and so forth. Number seven, most of manufactured park owners in Corona are non-local multimillion-dollar, I believe maybe billion-dollar corporations taking the money out of Corona to benefit stockholders and principals. Not even one park owner is a member of the Corona Chamber of Commerce. Not even one of the 14 park owners in Corona lives in Corona. Number eight, by the city council not adopting an RSO, they are choosing to support 14 non-local multimillionaires or billionaires instead of supporting 1,444 voting citizens who helped get them elected. Five years of unregulated rent increases in Corona parks, the cost of denial. This is number nine. In the past five years, since the city council of Corona first refused to enact a rent stabilization ordinance, the level of rent increase has become unsustainably unstable. In 2020, the base rent, this is just an average of all the parks. Some are way higher, but the base rent on average was $1,266.40 in 2020. 2021, it went up 4.3%, a $5,699 increase. 2022 was 66.17 at 4.76. And I believe that was part of that five-year deal. That's when that five-year deal, or it could have been before that. But in 2023, I remember this one, a 7.25% increase. It was huge. It was $108.30. 2024 got a little better, $74.90 increase, 4.75. And 2025, $78.64 at 4.75. A total of $385 in the five years. And it's probably going to be $7,800 in the next five. So we're doing this fight for, and mainly my wife this time. I can't believe how much she cares for the residents and the people. And just in 10 years, if nothing's done, definitely, people, within two to three years, we know people that are going to be on the streets, and it's just sad when we see it. So I'd like to, it was 2015. Of course, the microphone was over there. In God we trust, the pastor that had that put up. I just want to thank you. This has been a more peaceful, I'm not even going to say fight, because that was a fight. I just want to thank you all for considering this. I just pray that God puts it on your heart to make the right decision.
Yeah.
That's 40 seconds.
Yeah, go ahead and finish.
All right.
You're over, but go ahead. You got one more thing you want to get?
Yeah, one more thing. I want the mic on. In God we trust. We're just praying that God's will is done through this. Thank you.
Arnold D. Barra from Green River Village, and I'll be reading the third page. A good RSO defines limits and annual increases to protect the homeowners, providing the park owner a fair return. A good RSO pays for itself through a reasonable monthly admiration of $5 fee over a period of 12 months times 1,444 residents. Comes to about $86,640 annually. Limits increases to 50% of the annual CPI. Utilizes the state hearings court when necessary. Allows for fair return petitions, park owner-funded. Allow for park homeowners reduction in rent for reduction in services petition. Just allows pass-throughs without homeowner majority approval. Allows 5% lot rent increase upon home sale. Dozens of municipalities across the state have adopted standard RSOS such as this and have withstood court challenges for decades. It seems to have gotten a little bit out of control and I hope you guys can see that and calm it down a bit because it's just getting way out of control. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Eugene Physique. I'm from the Green River Village Park. And get ready for this. 1,444 Corona citizens are asking the city council to hear from a qualified and highly experienced expert, park residence advocate, and legal counsel. Park residents are asking the city councils to listen to a presentation by their advocate, attorney Bruce Stanton. Bruce, who has received his law degree from Pepperdine School of Law, has been practicing since 1982. Bruce has authorized, actually authored manuals about manufactured residence stabilization RSOS and has collaborated in creating RSOS for multiple municipalities. And Bruce has assisted city attorneys, other cities and county officials to write, pass, and amend RSOS in a number of jurisdictions throughout California. Bruce has represented mobile home residents in 40 administrative hearings for fair return petitions that you all like. And Bruce has argued law cases in many courts of appeals throughout California and helped author a brief to the U.S. Supreme Court in 1992 on manufactured rent stabilization issues. Park residents will pay for Bruce's time for this presentation to the city council. It will be no cost to the city now for the whammy. I hate to say this, but this is a two-headed snake in here because some of the information that was given to us by Dominique was not mentioned in either meetings that we had, were in presence of. And so some of that information, I questioned the fabrication to overwhelm us to make the wrong decisions. And for that, I hope that city council will give us all in our mobile homes that are actually mobile homes, not single-dwelling families' homes like in the complexes above us, that actually give us a fair return on what we have done.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Loomis. I'm from Countrywood Estates. I have Natalie and Kathy with me. We're representing still Countrywood Estates. We're representing still Countrywood Estates. I want to thank the council for all your work and consideration on the RSO, especially Jackie and Wes. One of the items being considered is a 51% capital improvement resident vote, which we're asking to be considered as part of the RSO or the MOU. At Countrywood Estates, we already have one capital improvement, which they have mandated on residents without providing us any invoices, any discussion, and doing work that would require such a large amount of money. We don't know where the money is. We're being charged for work that had previously been paid for, sorry, paid for by the park, like slurring the road. Previously, this had been considered a maintenance up until we started coming to the RSO meetings. We, as residents, would welcome an opportunity to discuss reasonable improvements for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to give this petition, I don't know, I don't, my time is being used right now. Can I get this passed out? So I'm passing out a petition of Rancho Corona residents that are in Councilmember Tony's district. My name is Maribel Nunez. I'm with Inland Empire Tenant Union. I did help and I am continuing helping other local jurisdictions to have a mobile home park rent stabilization ordinance for several years. And definitely ditto to what has been said in regards to the recommendations of Lydia and attorney Bruce Stanton. We're in agreement with that and what we had mentioned about the capital improvements. I think that part of what you saw in the presentation that RSG presented is that on the resident workshop, we want an RSO and not an MOU. It was like filled up the two workshops, English and Spanish. And then the 51% vote for new capital improvements with residents, I organized in Riverside. And so we did get the 51%. For the rent cap, we want 2% or 75% of CPI, whichever is less, no floor. Clear definitions about what is a pass-through versus capital improvement. If we could continue moving, if we're going to have the ad hoc committee. We've been hearing a lot of stories within the monthly statements. They're adding this, adding that. And then you don't know, or even in the rent, right? Some people are not seeing the pass-throughs or the capital. But then it might be hidden in the rent. We don't know. And I know there was a good letter from Bruce Stanton about the MOUs, not to have an MOU. When we're looking at all the different 107 jurisdictions, we really don't see MOUs. We see RSOS. And also, if a property owner, if they do the MOU and they leave, and you know, there's issues with the residents that are there, then you know, you're not going to have a legal binding for city to ask the, to sue the new or the old park owners. So let's stick to the RSO. And then I know that when we looked at the options for the RSO, there is an option about doing a complaint-based version. You could have a liaison, calculate the annual CPI, send emails to every park owner, which would only take two hours or the city worker to do. The liaison could collect the annual fees from the park owners. The park owners could include resident administration fees. Some people had agreed, maybe a $5 fee. That helps make this cost neutral. We could look at, if the park owner files a fair return, it would only take a few more hours for the liaison to process with a consultant and administrative judge, whatever you all want to use. But we could use complaint-based. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Maribel.
Hi, my name is Alondra Fabian. And I'm from Corona West Park. I stand before you to address a pressing issue that affects each and every one of us in our community. The rising cost of a living, specifically in the form of rent increases. Each year, we face an annual increase on our rent. And we just don't know how much it's going to be increased each year. While it may seem manageable for some, it adds up to a significant burden for my family and many other individuals in this community. We struggle to make ends meet, especially when it's unstable and in an unstable rate at any given time. As we endure these increases, we must ask ourselves, are our living conditions improving? The answer is really no. There's a lot of stray cats in our park. We have a decline in safety within our neighborhoods. These issues not only affect our quality of life, but also a sense of community and security. We believe that it's time for a change. And we advocate for the implementation of rent control or rent cap that would help stabilize housing costs and ensure that everyone has access to safe and affordable housing. So we really support the RSO and that it would provide us the necessary tools to address the deteriorating conditions we face. So that's what I want to say today, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Monica Widron. I come from Corona West. Just going to say, thank you, guys. Jackie, thank you. I appreciate you wanting to hear from the residents first. Sadly, I missed the workshops. But I wanted to add, and I don't think some people have added here or have this experience. But with the In-Lu agreement, I will add that my father received this agreement, you know, with pressure of the park manager to sign something that he had no knowledge of. And I'm sorry if I'm a little nervous. But if I had not seen it, questioned it, my father would have signed something that he didn't know what he was signing. So, you know, I appreciate a lot of the advocates that, you know, are here today and have informed some of us that had no idea of what was going on. But I'm absolutely in favor of an RSO. There's a lot of people that unfortunately are not here today, but are struggling at our park. And it's unfortunate, you know, we, we have notices for people to, of course, upgrade their mobile homes, paint jobs that, of course, will fall onto the homeowners to take care of. And I'm pretty sure a lot of them have absolutely no problem doing so. But with the rent already being kind of high, having to save some of that money to take care of their home kind of, it's kind of tight. And just like the other young woman said, we do have a lot of stray cats at Corona West. And it's kind of sad, of course. We've had a lot of incidents of people taking care of said cats. I have tried working with the park manager to, you know, offer traps to get these cats, you know, fixed. Because of course, everybody wants to live in an area that's nice, where their homes are not going to be damaged by animals. But I just, once again, I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to everybody. And I hope that you take into consideration everything that was said here today. And you are in favor of helping everybody here at, you know, at least with us in Corona West, in helping us with our rent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And no MOU. Thank you.
Hello, honorable mayor, members of the city council. My name is Clarissa Cervantes. I have the privilege of being a Riverside City Council member. Sorry. There we go, it's better. I have the privilege of being the War II representative on the Riverside City Council and also chair of the Housing and Homelessness Committee. I come before you as a sole representative for my district. But I wanted to come before you today to share that, proud to have worked in Riverside to move forward with strengthening our mobile home park rent stabilization ordinance that was just recently approved this last February by our city council. And it was a trying effort, you know, it was over a year effort. And I want to recognize the residents and committee members that were involved in that as well. Essentially, we had to look at the items that you were discussing here today to consider. It is a lot of information to consider. But I would urge you to move forward with supporting a rent stabilization ordinance. Because that is truly going to allow for you, the city, to be able to assure that you can provide the protection and the, essentially, the items needed to really make sure that the residents have the best thing in place for them to be able to keep and live in their homes. And one thing that we know that is happening right now is the cost of living is so high. Eggs, groceries have never been at the price they've been today. We know tariffs are a challenge. All of us are facing economic uncertainties. But the fact of the matter is, we have to keep people housed. If we do not move forward with adopting these types of measures and setting caps that could actually meet people where they are, we are going to see a further increase of people being unhoused, and particularly our seniors. And that is why, one of the reasons I came today is I wanted to be, make sure I could show up to further advocate, not just Riverside residents, but for our Corona residents here who deserve the dignity and respect after years of working and choosing to live in Corona, in your wonderful city. And we want to keep them housed in this community. And so I really encourage you, if possible, I understand that you have before you several measures and items. But I would encourage if you could move forward with a 2% rent cap or 75% CPI, whichever is less, but not setting the rent floor. I would also support the 51% new capital improvements for residents to vote. This again assures that there is equity and participation. Also would recommend clearer definitions on the pass-throughs. We saw this, and this still continues to be a challenge in Riverside, and we are also working on this as well. And I will add, I know that there's an item before you discussing time management for city staff. I will share that this is something that is operated and managed through our city, and it is something we've been able to absorb in our budget. I'm happy to see how we can connect you with our Housing and Human Services Director to share with you what those costs look like. But we have not had a challenge to be able to support what that is through Riverside. I would also encourage potentially an ad hoc committee. And I want to thank the committee that did the work going out with residents. And I also want to thank Inland Equity Community Land Trust for their leadership to really pull residents in to assure that those members, whether they are English, Spanish-speaking, are able to participate in this process. And so I encourage you to, of course, do what is in the best interest of your constituents. But I thank you again for the time, the consideration, and thank you for your leadership.
Ms. Cervantes, real quick. Real quick. As a, as a council member for Riverside, since you passed your RSO, have you guys noticed any unintended consequences of that? Where you said, oh my God, we didn't know that was going to happen?
No, and we were very intentional. There have not been unintended, thankfully. We haven't seen that. I will say that we did have park owners that came and met with, met with our city staff. They actually, we had several community meetings, and we had meetings to hear them as well individually. I will say that the amount that we came to the percentage, it was a 4% cap. I was personally hoping to push for a 2% or 3% because that's what we've heard the residents need. But I think that was the compromise that my colleagues were willing to come to. But I will say that residents still felt that that was too deep. And so folks-
Right, I just mainly meant, did you get any uh-ohs? I didn't think that would happen.
No, actually, it was, I think overall, the cap and some of the discussions, what you're going to have today, there was deliberation, of course. And I think some folks were uncomfortable with it, you know, essentially, setting a cap. But we know that this was the best interest of our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Maddy.
Hi there. I was asked not to repeat what was said. So Clarissa took care of most of that. Before I get started, the one thing I do want to make perfectly clear is I want to thank everybody involved. Because I know Jackie and Wes, the council, I know Karen Roper has put a lot of time into this, a lot of other people behind the scenes, including Maribel. I just want to thank everybody as far as that goes. The second thing that I want to understand is the idea of fair. What's fair for both the mobile homeowners and the park owners? And that being said, this has been a very big eye-opening experience for me. I got involved discussing this particular issue back in 2019 when I learned about a mobile home park in Fullerton called Rancho La Paz, where they sold the park to somebody new. They came in and raised the park rent so far that most everybody had to move. And it turns out now, years later, I have found somebody. I have a good friend that used to live there. And I've gotten the earful. And that's the one thing I'm really terrified is if a park owner says, I'm done. And somebody comes in, does the same thing. And that has not been mentioned before. That's a huge scare for me because I know it's been done. So please take that into consideration. The other thing, being an eye-opening experience for me is I am fortunate that I live in Villa Corona. And I have been working with the other nine parks because a lot of the issues that they're having, I will have to say, we do not have. And so I'm here also representing the other nine parks. I have, in nine years, never seen a capital improvement on my rent statement. We have had so much capital improvement. And I invite all of you that haven't been through the park. It's gorgeous, they maintain it. They're always doing capital improvements. They don't ask us because we don't see it on our rent or, we don't see it on our increases. It's all handled by rent. I have a long-term release there. And it's been signed that I get 3% a year, a max of 3%. And every five years, they do reevaluate. And I did get hit with a 10%. So overall, it averages out to 5%. I don't understand why some of the other parks can't use us as a model. And as far as also that goes, I would definitely like to see more of the RSO. I was at the meeting in February that Clarissa was talking about. And I was asked to also speak on behalf of that RSO that was being done. So I understand that as well. And she stole a lot of my thunder. What I'm asking also for, in regard to this, and it's maybe not under RSO, but to see what help, assistance might be available for those homeowners that do need to bring their units up to speed, to get the repairs done so they aren't evicted. And that's, I don't see that as part of a consideration regardless. But again, I'm also in favor of RSO versus the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddy.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Ricardo Jaen. I live in Corona West, Corona. Tony, my council member, I support mobile home park. RSO, no MOU. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council. Good day. My name is Chris Schultz. I'm actually a Minifee resident. But I'm here tonight because I'm the Democratic candidate in Assembly District 63. We have a primary election coming up, a special primary coming up on Tuesday. And there are mobile home parks in the district. So Villa Corona and Green River Village are part of Assembly District 63. So I wanted to speak a little bit to the rent stabilization ordinance here in support of it. And I don't want to repeat everything that has been said because a lot of good points have already been made. But I do want to support the 75% of CPI or 2%. Just to point things out, I'm actually in my third term in the executive board and bargaining team for my local education association. So I spend a lot of time looking at things like CPI and COLA and how that converts to our day-to-day survival in AD63. So currently, for instance, if schools are looking at 2.43% increase, as of May, the CPI here in this area was 2.6%, 3.3% if you take out items, less food and energy. So when we talk about wanting to keep that cap at 75% of CPI or 2%, you know, that's relatively realistic as it leaves a little bit of space for residents to go ahead and spend the money that remains in the local economy on other things aside from housing. And we definitely need to make sure we're addressing the housing crisis and the affordability crisis. We have knocked on thousands of doors across Assembly District 63 in this short campaign that started in April. And it's the number one thing on people's minds. They're worried about how are they going to survive the next day? How are they going to get an opportunity to live their lives instead of just to survive their lives? So I would encourage that. I would encourage that when there are capital improvements to be done, that you do make sure that it's a democratic process, that there's 51% of those who are at stake, who are stakeholders, who are actually getting to have the say in whether or not those things get done and whether or not they're necessary. I do want to thank everybody who is involved in the process. One of the admirable things here is it's obvious that across time, all of the stakeholders have been around the table. And that's how we get good policy in the end. And that's how we get good outcomes for residents here in Corona and across AD63. So with that, I'm going to refrain from repeating a lot of the other things that have been said. But I do want to both thank you for your work here and encourage you to move on this in a fashion that makes a difference in people's day-to-day lives as soon as feasibly possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
My name's Dan Messner. And I can't say it any better. Lydia's passion and your wisdom, they've said it all. But it shouldn't take 10 years to get rent stabilization. But I feel like, as a member, the last time I spoke here, I was speaking of some dumb issue, skyline trails or something.
That's not dumb.[1765.41] That's not dumb.
But at the same time, at the same time, that same night, there was another mobile home park that was closing right on the other side of the freeway here. And so they were all here about that. And I didn't speak, but I feel like it's our duty to fight for the poor and the needy. And so it shouldn't take forever to pass this stuff and we should have the best policy. Corona, born and raised here, should have the best rent stabilization anywhere. And so I can't say any better than they did, but thanks for your time and thanks for taking this up, take up the good fight and fight for them.
Thanks.
For Minifee, I have a son that works in Orange County and lives in Minifee, I call it Hemet, but he, because that's where he can afford to live, he can't afford it here. And, but he can move there. Most of these people can't move. They have, that's all, there's nowhere they can go. So we need to fight for them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Mary Huffman and I'm from Villa Corona, which we have no complaints, except for the increases. We'd been there a few months when this lady walked down the street, this is all personal, you need to know, and she goes, oh, my rent increase was so much, I won't even be able to buy the groceries I'm used to buying. That's the difference with the elderly people there, that they're on a set income. And the lady that lived there 20 years, she just moved out with her daughter. Her social security wouldn't cover her rent any longer because it kept going up and up. So she had to go to savings every month. Those are the people that you need to be thinking about for this because the majority of people are on set incomes. And when you raise their rent more than their income was raised, it really takes a toll on them. And thank you very much for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lilia Castro and I'm from Corona, La Linda. And I'm here because the lady, I purchased my mobile home, and this is my first time being in one of these things, but I purchased my mobile home in 2023, I'm sorry, in 2021. And the lady that I purchased this from, she couldn't afford the rent anymore. She moved to Texas into a tiny home on her son's property. I calculated what the rent is being increased currently, that by the time I retire, I won't be able to afford this place. I am already thinking, I need to move. And where am I going to go? I can't. I'm on a single income and it's tough. So I hope you guys put a stop to this.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Julie Polly with the WMA and I represent mobile home park owners here in Corona. Last year, I recommended the MOU model as an alternative to a rent control ordinance because I'm deeply concerned about the unintended consequences on the mom-and-pop park owners, good people who will be swept up by an abroad, one-size-fits-all ordinance. Your consultant, RSG, has laid out these risks clearly. Burdensome administration, expensive application process, hearings and potential for costly rent increases through the fair rate of return petitions. And when rents go up because of these very petitions, or when a park closes or gets redeveloped, groups like Gizmo and community organizing groups are nowhere to be found. They never talk about the downsides, but RSG did. And like Mayor Steiner said, when he learned about the hearing, the presentation last year, he said, this is ridiculous. And it is ridiculous for 10 communities creating an entire regime, lawyers, staff and bureaucracy. But providing real lasting protections for residents is not ridiculous. That's necessary. And what I've been working for towards over a year, so I've spent many hours bringing park owners to the table to make voluntary concessions, real benefits to the residents at no cost to the city. So I think it's important to reiterate, the MOU model would eliminate the objectionable long-term lease terms, capping increases at CPI and removing market catch-ups like Matty spoke about. It should have no fee, there's no MOU in California that has a fee, fully enforceable by your city attorney with remedies if you decide to include those. Apply to future owners through recording the land at the county, excuse me, recording the contract at the land, on the land at the county. Allow the city to pass a stricter RSO on any park owner that does not participate voluntarily, protecting all residents in your city. Avoid the fair rate of return hearings at the risk of $100 increase for the residents to foot the bill of these hearing costs. And include park owner-funded rental assistance, which rent-controlled jurisdictions can't receive, you can require park owners to participate in that. So the only thing I believe at this point that may be missing is some collaboration and it takes a conversation. So I would propose a meeting with the two or three residents and two and three park owners, no lobbyists, no attorneys, just real stakeholders that sit down and try to discuss these terms to see if we can find an agreement. Once a pure RSO is passed, there's no going back and fixing a flawed ordinance is nearly impossible. So I'd ask you to give the MOU model a chance, even for a limited period, and if it doesn't work, you can always pass an RSO. So please don't shut the door on collaboration. Thank you.
Good evening. Joe Morgan, 2063 Rent. Oh, has people been here for almost 10 years now? Like 10 years? And we were brought here not because of collaboration, because we were, because these parks were getting snatched up by corporations and doubling the rent, just like Matty was talking about. And so it does my heart good to see a bunch of people here from Corona West because they were the park that really couldn't come here or wouldn't come here when this whole thing first started to break. And, and, you know, I mean, cry me a river for, you know, the park owners now who want to come to the table and want an MOU. They were not exactly cooperative before, now they are, now that they found out you're serious. In a perfect world, the MOU or in lieu, you know, it could work. It could work. We're not necessarily in a perfect world, you know, so you heard the shortcomings of it and they've got to agree to it and whether they are now and, and this previous speaker mentioned arm twisting and, you know, like they're having to even try to get cooperation and collaboration on their side of the whole thing. So it kind of tells you what this is about. This whole thing was about, it wasn't about independent park owners screwing over their residents, it's about companies coming in and snatching up the parks that were already making money, you know? Mobile home parks are cash cows. They make lots of money, they have, they collect lots of rent and they all make money. The only reason they get closed down is because you think that you can, you can make more money off of the land by making it into apartments or something. That's the only reason they close. It's not because, well, we just can't, we can't make a fair rate of return. So, you know, if there's a benefit that, I know you guys can't really do this to stop it, but I'll say it, to stop corporations from having an incentive to come in and double and triple in the rent to screw over the park, they don't really give, those guys don't give a crap about the residents. So kind of, I'm over listening to that. So anyhow, so, but I just want to remind just for everybody, there's two property owners in this whole thing. It's not necessarily about just the park owners. You have a property owner above the ground and you have a property owner below the ground. Only one of them has a choice. So I, it's, it's great to be here at this point and it's been a long process and I'm happy to see it get to this point and, you know, you could leave a window open for in lieu, but I'm, you know, knowing, knowing who most of these park owners are at this point, I wouldn't really hold my breath for it. Thank you. It's nice to see Karen and I really want to thank Cynthia Larve because I know she put a ton of work in this, ton of work into this. She's not here and it kind of breaks my heart that she's not here. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Hi, Frank.
Hello. I wasn't planning on speaking, but Joe Morgan motivated me.
Thanks, Joe.
I don't come to a lot of meetings here, but I was here, just what happened, I was here 10 years ago, I just happened to be here and this issue was on the table. What's the difference between greed and ambition? Greed, when you make a lot of money, but you hurt a lot of people along the way. Ambition is when you make a lot of money, you don't hurt anybody. I think you guys here represent all them people here. That's why they're here, because this is their last hope. And I know most of you, you have good hearts. And I think you're kind of biased a little bit because you're on a people's side, they voted you in. So I think, I'm not good in CPUs and numbers, I'm not in the mobile home business, I'm in other businesses, but I am very, very sure you guys are going to do what's right and you're going to use the value of ambition versus greed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Frank.
Well, thank you, Mayor Steiner and members of the council. My name's Benjamin Kelly and I work with the Manufactured Housing Educational Trust representing mobile home park owners. And I want to discuss what has been referred to as the in lieu agreement portion of the stakeholder process as well as the presentation you just saw. Coming into this, I didn't have a wide familiarity with the term in lieu. As far as what we had known it was or known it as, was a little bit more along the lines of MOUs and accords. We had done a lot of research on that since then and found that these agreements are, you know, the MOU or the accord, they're kind of interchangeable in those terms. What we did find was that there's 10 jurisdictions that have adopted MOU agreements and only one of those cities has a rent control ordinance on the books. Other cities referenced rent control, but there was no need to adopt it because the parks participated in those MOU agreements. Four of those have been in place since 1995, 1996, and that's nearly 30 years, obviously, and they're continuing to work. Different, different, over different times, five-year, 10-year, some 20-year agreements. As I mentioned, three of the four that have been since 1995, 96, have five-year terms that continue to be extended. The fourth has a 20-year term that has been extended another 20 years. None have been repealed or modified. They are all working at little to no expense to the city. Annual rent increases are usually between the 10, 10 different agreements, around 100% CPI or more, with the exception of only one that's 75% of CPI and it has a maximum and a minimum involved with that one. One city uses, actually uses COLA, 100% of COLA. We also have one that's 120% of CPI with a cap of 10, minimum of four, another that has 100% CPI and once again, maximum, minimum involved. As far as vacancy decontrol goes with these MOUs, some have limited increase on turnover when the home sells and some of them had complete vacancy decontrol. And so with that, there's also government fees that are allowed to pass through a number of different things. Rental assistance programs for park residents are required in three cities with specific criteria. And the MOU model is a viable response to the projected extraordinary costs to implement and administer a rent control ordinance. So we're definitely in favor of the MOU model. Thank you.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, my name is Vicki Tally. I'm the executive director of the Manufactured Housing Educational Trust. I think we've had a good presentation tonight. One thing I heard and heard loud and clear was that the option was to adopt or consider an RSO and/or an MOU or in lieu, as we're calling it in this city. I think you've heard a lot of testimony this evening about how the MOU works, but the key component here is that it eliminates a brand-new multimillion-dollar cost of a new bureaucracy. And the MOUs work. I'd really like to encourage you to look very specifically at some right next door. In the city of Ontario, the MOU has been in existence for years, just renewed. There is no staff expense to administer this. All 10 parks, interestingly enough, the same number of parks that you have, comply and it's working very, very well. I think one of the things that may have been missing in the discussions up to this point are really looking at the MOUs that are working and how they benefit the residents. There is a security to know and I think that's the key here. You want the residents of your city's mobile home communities to know what the limit is going to be and the parameters are going to be on annual rent increases. And I think that's what the MOU does amongst many other things. So I really encourage you this evening to consider actually putting together a task, I think Julie Polly's recommendation was excellent, to put together a group of owners and residents who want the same thing. They want these parks to continue to be quality living parks, quality of life, and they can't do that when you put restrictions on the income on the properties. They cannot continue to do the improvements. These are old parks. You've got some in the city that are 85 years old, old parks. You can't sustain that with strict, strict regulations that limit increases on the rents. They're fair and reasonable approaches and I encourage you to look very closely at the options and in particular, the ones like in Ontario. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zabdi Obolto, or Zab. I represent La Corona Mobile Home Park. Mayor Steiner and council members, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak in regards to the topic of the RSO or MOU. I've been in the mobile park industry for about 15 years and I've served as an educator in this industry. I have participated in workshops from the ad hoc committee and given my thoughts on the MOU. I hope that I can be a resource for the ad hoc committee in understanding how our parks work and how either RSO or MOU would affect how we operate our parks. There are clearly two sides to this topic. Should the city of Corona impose an RSO or enter into an MOU agreement with the mobile home park owners? The council is elected among other things to act in the best interest of its community and I believe the community has been heard today. I understand and the apprehension of residents in agreeing to the MOU. We have had a couple of bad actors that have painted all park owners in a bad light. Unfortunately, this fosters distrust and does not help with cooperation. However, we do need to assess the true impacts of either ordinance. So when we're looking at an RSO, there is a cost to administer the RSO, but I think it's kind of been beaten down, right? That's what everybody points out, you're going to save money if you don't go with the RSO. The other one is that the parks already have, that already have high rents, the parks that have already been impacted, this will not affect them. They're already at the high rents, they've already done what they're going to do. What this is going to impact, a very strict RSO anyways, would are the mom-and-pop type operators that have kept rents reasonable, that have worked with the residents in lowering incoming space rents when they do sell their homes. So it is punitive to the parks that have worked with the residents and have community events and have fostered this relationship with the residents. RSO usually eliminates park owner mediation and does create a lot of litigation. The condition of the parks will suffer, which they maintain that, you know, we're protecting our investment and, yes, we are protecting our investment, but that investment is also the community's investment. If the park deteriorates, your home value also deteriorates. I want to live somewhere clean, nice and that's maintained and that's going to give me top dollar for my home, not only a fair return for the owner. Although the RSO seems like an immediate win, often if too strict, it is a long-term loss because those communities will suffer. I believe an MOU can be reached that would protect both park owners and their residents. Like the true compromise, neither side would be completely happy with a well-drafted MOU. It was stated that expenses have gone up, yes, everybody's expenses have gone up. And I don't doubt that the residents need protections. All that I'm asking for is that we can maybe meet a middle ground to where we're protecting the owners that have done a good job, a good steward of their communities, while at the same time, making sure that we're not pricing out people from their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? All right, I did receive a message from a resident that said, why are you allowing people to speak longer than three minutes? I thought that wasn't allowed. And I said, well, I like to give the citizens, the citizens the benefit of the doubt when they're getting really close, I feel, to finishing their point, but also to individuals who have been battling for a decade on an issue. So that's the reason. All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I do want to note that we have two speakers on Zoom that want to speak on this item.
Okay, let's do it.
Yes, good evening. This is Bruce Stanton. Can you hear me?
You are unmuted.
Sir, sir, we can hear you. You can give your public comment.
Okay, thank you. This is Bruce Stanton. Good evening, Mayor Steiner, members of the council. I'm Bruce Stanton, corporate counsel for GS MOL. Thank you for making the June 10th letter that I submitted part of the packet. I appreciate that and I appreciate the chance to address you tonight. I'm not going to repeat the items that I covered in my letter, the background, the need for the regulation and some essential RSO components that I discussed. And I thought the RSG presentation by Dominique was extremely professional tonight. I appreciate that. I do have some comments, though, that I want to emphasize about the in lieu contractor agreement that the industry, as a previous speaker indicated, we typically call MOUs or memorandums of understanding. These are less effective in my experience and I've been involved since 1986, as mentioned, with negotiating, drafting, enacting, enforcing mobile home ordinances. We call them RSOs. I've been involved in two MOU negotiations in Sunnyvale and Modesto and I've probably done 50 to 60 fair return hearings. The problem with MOUs is, first of all, they take a lot of time because park owners have to voluntarily agree to them and it doesn't appear, and given the comments here, that we really have that in this case. There's some divergent opinion about some of the components. So it's not a law, it's a contract and that calls into question enforcement, deterrence, and oversight. Will there be a private right of action to enforce the MOU if the city doesn't do it? Would the city be prepared to enforce? Would it apply to future park owners? Would there be a fair return provision? Will there be vacancy control provisions, pass-throughs? In my experience, these can take a long time to put together and Sunnyvale, we took 11 months to do that. I would also indicate that we have an issue that we've encountered there with what happens to current leases. In Sunnyvale, we negotiated an assignment provision for those leases and there's no more state law exemption for long-term leases, by the way. As far as cost and risk issues, RSOs are self-funded in jurisdictions almost completely by the annual fee that's paid by park owners and residents and part of that can be passed through to residents. But I think it's unfair to make residents pay for petition costs. I have frankly not seen ordinances that allow that. And if you do, then it would be unfair to the residents because they may not be able to file a petition at all if they can't afford that cost. And also you're penalizing them if park owners file petitions that are, you know, specious and then the residents have to pay that cost. There's actually a California Supreme Court case called Gallin versus City of Clovis that says that cost of petition can be considered as part of the fair return process. And I know that some of the comments tonight were, well, what about the mom and pop, you know, owners? Should we penalize them?
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. No, 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 you got another one, Sylvia?
Yes, we have one more speaker on Zoom.
So my name is Hillary Moser. I work as a volunteer for the Golden State Mobile Homeowners League. I work as their recognized consultant on rent stabilization ordinances and I work with communities all across the United, I mean, all across the state of California. There's a couple of misconceptions going on. One, in the RSG presentation, mobile homes were called coaches. We do not live in coaches. I live in a mobile home park. I live in a home. When the roof leaks, I got to pay $10,000, like you do, to get a new roof. When the water heater breaks, I got to get a new water heater, just like anyone else living in a stick-built home. These are not on wheels. These are homes. They're houses. The other consideration, I think, is this idea that moms and pops are going to get hurt. They're not. The moms and pops that aren't charging egregious increases will be, will not be affected. Problem is, when they die and their heirs sell to a corporation and jack up the rent. We heard from a couple of people who said, oh, there's no problem in my part and that's, that's probably true, but what happens when there is? They're not going to be protected. I feel like this city council is full of very thoughtful people. I thank, I thank you for being here and I hope you will realize that the park owner's representative himself told you there are only seven communities in the state with MOU. There's a reason for that. There are 97 communities with RSO. Park owners will always try to get an MOU. It is far more beneficial. And if park owners say, well, we just can't afford to keep this park open, well, good. Let's work together with the residents of the park so they purchase it themselves. If the new move is, it's going across the state of California, resident-owned parks where it's like a condo, you own the property that your home sits on and there are multiple grants available to help residents in mobile parks purchase their own parks. And I don't buy, I know for a fact, these billionaire park owner corporations, they're not individuals, they're corporations, they are making money off the backs of some of your poorest residents to enrich their shareholders. And truly, I have seen so many RSOs that didn't take a million dollars, didn't take 10 years, they just, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. They, they exist and you can adopt almost the exact same ones that you find works in another community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else, Sylvia?
Mayor, we do not have anybody else on Zoom.
All right, nobody else out there, right? Okay, let's turn it over to Ad Hoc Committee. Which one of you wants to go first?
Yeah, I don't mind. I took a page out of the mayor's book and wrote my thoughts down so I don't forget anything, but I do not have any curse words in it, so it's not fully in your style. I'm getting close, though. So thank you, mayor, and good evening. I want to take a moment to acknowledge how long this process has taken, but also this council has not been here for 10 years. I just want to make sure that you all know that. But this process has taken a long time and I want to acknowledge how much work and care has gone into it. This conversation around rent stabilization in our city's mobile home parks has been ongoing for more than two years with this council. That's two years of community dialogue, council discussion, consultant research, staff time, and meaningful engagement from all sides. To everyone that has participated, thank you. Whether you sent an email, attended a meeting, helped organize a tour, or simply shared your experience, your voice has made a difference. I want to especially thank mobile home residents and advocates like Lydia Husner, Maddie Paxton, and Marybel Nunez for your persistence and your clarity. And to the park owners and their representatives, particularly Julie Polly, thank you for opening up your parks and participating in this process with good faith. To our staff and RSG consultants, thank you for the countless hours you've spent gathering data, listening to stakeholders, and helping guide this work. You've brought both rigor and compassion to a difficult issue. I also want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Wes Speek, for his partnership on the Ad Hoc Committee. Wes, I appreciate your thoughtful engagement, your perspective, and your collaboration as we work through this complex and important issue together. And I want to acknowledge that not all mobile home residents may feel safe attending tonight's meeting. We've heard concerns from some community members about the recent increased presence of federal immigration officers. That reality may be keeping some families, particularly immigrants, from participating publicly, even when these policies deeply affect them. I want those residents to know that their voices matter and that they have been heard through their letters, through their messages, and their stories that shared with us throughout this process. After reviewing all the information and listening carefully to residents and park owners alike, I believe the best path forward is a single-track rent stabilization ordinance, not a dual system that includes both an ordinance and a MOU or an in lieu agreement, however you want to call it. I understand the intent behind the dual-track idea, but I believe it would ultimately create confusion, raise costs, and be harder to enforce. A single, clear ordinance creates consistency and fairness for park owners, residents, and the city. Some have said that an RSO would punish good park owners. I don't believe that's true. Good operators will continue doing what they already do well. An ordinance simply makes their fairness and transparency the standard for all. There's also concern about residents subletting their homes under rent control while charging higher market rates. But under California law, subletting typically requires the park owner's approval. We can and should include clear language in an ordinance to address this and prevent misuse. And yes, an RSO will require some administrative costs, but so would an MOU. The difference is that an ordinance offers public accountability and legal enforceability. That kind of reliability is worth investing in. A strong ordinance will include and should include three types of petitions for park owners to seek additional increases when needed. Pass-throughs for governmental, government-imposed fees or taxes. These need to be clearly and narrowly defined to prevent misuse. I recommend that the Ad Hoc Committee further refines this. Capital improvements. These include necessary health and safety upgrades as well as new amenities. For new, non-essential improvements where residents are asked to share the cost, I believe residents should have a say. I support requiring a majority vote of residents in those cases. And fair return. This is a constitutionally protected option for park owners who believe that they aren't earning a reasonable profit, even after all the allowable increases. It ensures a balanced and legally sound ordinance that protects both residents and owners. I believe that these provisions create a system that's fair, transparent, and predictable and one that fosters stronger communication between everyone involved. This is about more than rent formulas. It's about people. Many of our mobile home residents are seniors and working families living on fixed incomes. For them, this is about staying in their homes, about aging in place, about being able to afford groceries and medication without fear of rent spikes. We've heard their stories and we have a responsibility to act. An RSO will help preserve affordability, prevent displacement, and protect hard-earned equity residents have in their homes. And for the parks already operating in good faith, this ordinance reinforces and recognizes that commitment. Tonight, staff has asked us to do three things. First, confirm the direction that we gave at the September 2024 workshop. I want to acknowledge that my recommendation has shifted. At that time, I supported a broader framework, but after months of additional engagement, review, and reflection, I now believe a clearer path is needed. Specifically, I recommend a single-track rent stabilization ordinance with a 2% rent cap with no floor, rather than a CPI-based formula discussed last fall. This provides predictability for residents while still allowing owners to recover justified costs. I also believe that we can create an RSO program that is more reactive than proactive so as to minimize costs. The second thing asked of us tonight is to decide whether to include an in lieu agreement option. Obviously, my position is clear. We should not adopt a dual-track system. While the idea of an MOU is well-meaning, it adds administrative burden, administrative burdens, creates uneven protections across parks, and risks eroding transparency. A single enforceable ordinance is the more fair and effective choice. The third thing asked of us is to provide directions on next steps. I recommend that this matter return to the Ad Hoc Committee to continue the work. Our committee should draft the ordinance, refine the petition types and the processes, and hold public meetings if needed to gather more feedback. Once that's done, we should bring a full draft to the council for a final vote. That's how we ensure this process remains transparent, thoughtful, and inclusive. This has been a long road and at times, a challenging one, but also a necessary and productive one. There are still details to work through and I remain committed to doing that work through the Ad Hoc process. Tonight, we have the opportunity to give clear direction, to move forward with a single, well-structured rent stabilization ordinance, grounded in fairness, accountability, and respect to everyone involved. Thank you again to everyone who is engaged with us. I will remain available, involved, and committed to getting through this for our community.
I'm really glad you wrote that down.
Me, too. No way I could have remembered that.
Wes, what do you have to offer?
I don't have as, I'm not quite as eloquent as Vice Mayor Casillas and she did a very fine job of thanking everybody, but I want to, you know, also thank everybody that's involved in the process. I sat in that crowd in 2015 when the folks came and, and the impetus for that, the folks that were in this room, was a predatory billionaire that came in and wreaked havoc on people's lives. And I learned so much from all of you, from Lydia, from Steve, from lots of folks there in most conversations over the past 10 years. And I agree with Councilmember Casillas, it has taken, you know, a long time, but, you know, as she also said, that a lot of us are, you know, we're not quite new, but there are new folks up here that, that we're really happy to be moving this forward and getting this addressed in some way. And I think that the message that I have heard from day one is, Wes, we need help. Wes, we need predictable rent increases, ones that we can plan, ones that we can, we can have a thought-out process for. And, you know, I spent a lot of time, as Jackie said, we spent a lot of time looking at rent stabilization ordinances and looking at different MOUs. And thank you, Clarissa, for coming in and mentioning about, you know, what you have. But I will say, in Riverside, it's not quite, it's not quite exactly, you know, I know you don't have 2%, you have four, you don't have vacancy decontrol, and you have automatic pass-throughs for capital expenses. And I think I'm not in favor of all of those things. I think that there are a way to do it better. And I, and I think that there, the one thing I think that we need to make sure that we remind of everybody here, that, you know, you all got turned away in 2017 to go, to go work with the, the park owners to come up with, you know, leases and all the other machinations that came out and it didn't work, obviously, because your rents continued to go up because of CPI, because of, you know, frankly, I, we all paid more. So, you know, there's a lot of that goes into this. So I looked at this and I thought, what is the best way to provide a stable and predictable level of increase? And, and I keep coming back to, to the agreement because the agreement is a legal document. It is not a suggestion, it's not an agreement between the park owners and the residents. It is enforced by our city attorney. So if there's issues, our city attorney will be the person that will, that will make sure that the park owners are, are doing that. And I think that there's still a possibility for us to do two tracks because I do think that we have, you know, at least one, maybe two park owners that don't want to follow this. They will most likely fight us. But, you know, when, when Jackie and I went and toured the, toured the parks, the first question I asked, we went to La Corona and to Via Corona. we went to La Corona and to Villa Corona, looked at both of those parks, very pleased with how they were run, talked to folks that lived there, they're very happy with what they have. Both parks did capital improvements and didn't pass those through. They capture those as part of their, part of their rent, just like many of you have told me. Why can't they just handle this in their rent? Villa Corona, I mean, absolutely beautiful community room, it just got remodeled, they redid their gym, barbecues, it's gorgeous. Didn't pass any of that through to the, to the residents. And so I look at this, and I say, if you have a very restrictive RSO, the only option that park is going to have is to pass it through. So you're going to have rent spikes. So you're going to have your CPI, whatever the percent that we agree upon, the park owner's going to come in with their guaranteed right that they have by law to get a fair return, and they're going to ask to pass those things through. And you're going to see your rent spike one year, and be flat the next, and spike the next, and you're not going to be able to plan. And I think that one of the things that the park owners give up with an in-lu agreement is that they cannot get that petition. They cannot petition for, for, you know, these other returns. I think it's a great idea to find ways for us to move, that you should have a vote on new amenities. You should have a vote on things that you want to see. I'm fully in favor of continuing to go down this process and find a way to make it binding, but at the same time, that it's stable, that we're not going to see rent spikes. And I think the unintended consequences of having an RSO is you're going to have, in fact, we're going to reward the bad actor, the bad person that has a billion dollars and has 50 of these places. He's not going to have to spend a lot of money putting this together, because he's going to put it together for 50 other parks. And he's going to submit the same thing. Our costs are going to increase, because those parks are going to continue to put things through. So I think that, that this eliminates, elimination, if we can form a very positive and very tight MOU that holds, that gives the residents predictability and stability of what your increases are going to be, and also make sure that the parks can maintain themselves, I think we have a, you know, win-win. I think that some of the park owners I talked to weren't super happy about that, and I know that some of the residents aren't going to be happy about it either. But I think there's a way for us to protect everybody and have that stability on both sides that prevents or protects these parks forever. I know that there was some concern about people being kicked out and setting up, that there was going to be, you know, people that were fined for silly things, not having, you know, the right paint, or not doing whatever, and that, we asked a lot of questions, found that didn't happen. That's not a thing. People aren't getting evicted because they're, you know, getting fined out of their, out of their, their location. I think what this does is this provides not only a legally defensible document, the, and the writings that we got this week from the, from the park owners, they're basically open to elimination of objectionable leases. So if you have a lease that you don't want to get into and you want to follow this, they're willing to break that lease and say, fine, we'll start over. Yeah, I wish we would have had this conversation five years ago, or hell, seven years ago when I was, when I was sitting back there, because I think this, we would have been in a much better place. So I'm still in favor of going forward on a dual-track, because I think there'll be at least one park that will not, not want to sign, and they'll do the RSO. But I think the other ones that have acted in a straightforward and in honest way with their, their park owners, or with their residents, are going to get punished. And they're going to be forced, forced to include. And I know that, you know, La Corona is going to be doing a water upgrade, because their park is 75 years old. Guess what? If you live in La Corona, you're going to see an upgrade. You're going to see, you're going to see a charge. If they can, and if they've shown that they can, with getting a fair right of return, or getting a return that's guaranteed for them too, that they can plan, that they're going to be able to do that without, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but they're going to be able to do that without, without a coming. In fact, they won't be able to come to us for an increase. They're going to be legally prevented from coming to us for an increase. And you're right. If a park sells, like what happened with Corona and Alinda, those costs are going to pass through no matter what. There's nothing an RSO is going to do to stop that. So the harder you make it on these folks on both sides, there's going to be pain and lots of it. So I look back, and I, those conversations having with, with folks about saying that you wanted something that was stable, you wanted something that was predictable, and I think that, that having an option of an in-lu agreement or an MOU is going to help you get there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me open it up to my other council colleagues. Tony, what do you got?
I'm ready. I just want to clear something up, because it's been weighing on my mind, but I'm fairly certain, I'm a little confused about this, this somehow co-mingling of an MOU versus an RSO. I was, I'm fairly certain that at that workshop, a year and a half, two years ago, whenever it was, that we had discussed going down the road to identify which one, exploring them, and it was like an either-or, is the way that I'm recalling this. Like, could we do an MOU? And unfortunately, I'm going to blame you, Dean. I thought you were the one that brought up the MOU and said, this is something that is a possibility. And I thought that we kind of latched on to the idea and said, well, let's look at them both. Let's do, let's go down that road at the same time to figure out which one would serve our community better, because we legitimately didn't know.
It was not an idea that I raised, but it was an idea that I discussed in response to this, and I think it was last September that we're talking, so it's not quite that long ago. But what we were told is pursue the RSO, but also look at the possibility of doing an in-lu agreement with it. Because you can only do, you have to have the park owner's consent to do the agreement. So those cities that only do agreements, it's because every single park owner said, yes, we'll do the agreement. So our idea was, and we discussed it in that meeting, was we'll adopt the RSO, but for any park owners who wish to do a more simplified, hopefully easier-to-administer in-lu agreement, they can enter into that agreement, and the RSO will not apply to them. So it was, it was always a two-track either-or, not a do one or the other, because we can't guarantee that you only do an agreement. There's no way to do that. We can't force the park owners to do an agreement. We can't force them to enter into an agreement, and we particularly can't. What's most important is we can't force them to not have the fair return hearing. That is a constitutional protection that they're entitled to, and only with the agreement can they waive that.
Dean, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with you. I'm 100% certain that it was, let's look at an MOU and also look at an RSO, because of that exact reason. If they didn't come to the table for an MOU, we said, to hell with it, and we're going to go down the RSO road. That's the way that I-
Can somebody play the tapes?
Yeah, that's the way, that's the way that I interpret it.
Maybe the ad hoc committee could come to my defense, because that's what we've been pursuing since that meeting, was the option. So you'll have the RSO, but the option for a park owner to enter into an agreement.
Yeah, that was, that was if they all came to the table and said, we would, we would enter into an MOU. And if they didn't, if we got four or five of all of them, then we were just going to go the RSO route. That's the way that I interpret it. So that's what I'm going to go with. That's our reality.
Dean, I got your back, brother.
Let's think-
I got your back, yeah.
Let's play that out, though. So if we just, we go through all of this work, and they say initially, we'll all do the agreement, that's fine. So you don't adopt an ordinance, and you do the agreement, and then soon as the first three-year, five-year term or whatever is up, and they say, we don't want to do it anymore? Now you got to go back and draft the ordinance? That's why we said, even if there's no city that's done it yet, we said, we can draft an ordinance, but then say, in the ordinance, if you do this agreement, you're not subject to the ordinance. And then if you ever breach the agreement, you'll become subject to the ordinance. So even though no city's done it that way, doesn't mean it can't be done that way.
Okay. I still don't agree with you. Thank you, Dean. But that's neither here nor there, because, because we're, we need to make a decision of RSO or RSO with an MOU, right? And I want to, there's a couple, there was a couple of facts that were thrown out from, from some of the speakers, and I just want to verify. One of them was that there's only seven communities in the state that are doing an MOU. Do I understand that correctly? Do we have those numbers confirmed, and 97 communities just doing an RSO?
So it's interesting. There's a website that tracks all the RSO agreements, but the website does not track the, I mean, RSO ordinances or RSOs, but the website does not track in-lu agreements. So any conversation about how many cities have in-lu agreements only is anecdotal. It's not, there's no, I don't have proof one way or the other, but I can't, and I, in fact, I spoke to somebody at one of the workshops and said, can you go to that website owner and ask them to start tracking the in-lu agreements too? I think that would be helpful for somebody to be tracking it.
Okay. And then one of the other statements that was made was that there are, that we don't consider mobile homes, manufactured homes, mobile homes as far, as part of our inventory on affordable homes. Do we know, is that also true? And is there a reason for that? I don't, I'm not exactly sure who we would ask.
Joanne, is that a question for you?
So it's, yes, any kind of housing, depending on its income, gets counted towards whatever our regional housing allocation is. But because you have existing homes, you're not going to get credit for that. Remember, your RENA is always about new production of homes. So if you were to get a new mobile home park, and there was a rental category that falls within moderate or low income, then we would get to apply that to our RENA allocation.
So, okay, so in theory, in, you know, 10 years ago, when they put a mobile home or manufactured home on a lot, it counted then? We got, we got the credit for it then?
Yeah, we got the credit based on the income category. So it's, remember, it's always about the income. Anytime you build a housing unit, it's always based on what the income category is.
Got, gotcha. Okay. Listen, this is a very complicated process, and I am in favor of this going back to ad hoc to work through this, through coming to a consensus on an RSO. I don't know what it looks like, but I know that it has to be worked through with a committee to come up with something. I don't, I don't think that the MOU is the right path, and the reason that I don't think that is because if park owners wanted to come to the table, they should have 10 years ago. They wanted to be good actors, they wanted to be good owners. They should have done it 10 years ago. I don't know what the RSO looks like. Figure it out. Let me know. Good luck.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we have the most educated pickleball community in rent stabilization ordinance. My thoughts are Vice Mayor Jackie Casillas' thoughts, and I wish I could speak as eloquently as her, but I can't. I, I don't trust the mobile homeowners as far as I can kick a tractor. And they screwed our community over 10 years ago. They've continued to screw them over since. They fight the state on legislation that would have brought a rent stabilization ordinance statewide last year. They did that at the, you guys did that at the state level. You should stand up and take a bow. I just don't trust you. You guys suck. So I watched in 2015, from back there, I watched a kid, a young, a young boy, probably nine years old, come to the microphone over there and say he would gladly forego Santa Claus so that his parents could pay rent that year. And that kid's grown now, and maybe he's helping his parents pay rent. But Santa Claus is coming this year, so we're going to do a rent stabilization ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, what I remember, what Dean said was right back then, and we did vote to move forward with the establishment of an RSO. I voted that way, because I was aware that most residents at mobile home parks are seniors, and they are on fixed income, and they are disabled, many, and I know that from my career as a firefighter, responding to emergencies on all 10 parks over and over and over for over three-plus decades. So, you know, and I also wanted to protect them from predatory landlords. That's the last thing they needed. And another part of it, though, is we work so hard to address our homeless crisis, and part of that, that strategy is to prevent people from becoming homeless. And I feel that for many mobile home park owners, this is their last resort. And I, when the in-lu agreement was brought up, I was intrigued by it, because I thought, hey, maybe there is a chance to get a win-win-win here. But I'm tired of waiting, you guys, and I don't feel that either option is perfect, but I also support doing an RSO only moving forward. And, and, you guys, I know we're not going to all agree on the details of that, so be prepared to keep fighting, okay? And we're going to fight back on some of that stuff, too. All right.
So just to summarize, Mr. Mayor, I, on the ask, and Councilmember Daddario, I'd be happy to go back to the ad hoc, but it sounds like we have a majority, four-member majority, to drop the in-lu agreement and move forward on an RSO only, and to go back to the ad hoc to work on a draft RSO. And if necessary, the ad hoc can have public meetings to discuss the details of the RSO.
I would say not if necessary. I would say that is necessary.
No, absolutely. I agree.
Yeah.
Can I make one more additional comment? If the rent stabilization ordinance goes forward, and there's problems with it going forward, it can always be brought back to council.
Absolutely.
It can always be adjusted. It can always be fixed.
In fact, Riverside has an annual review for the RSO.
Yes, thank you. And just want to make that comment.
All right, staff, clear as mud? Okay. Let's move on to our consent calendar. Pickleballs, we're almost there, guys. Thank you so much for sticking this out. I hope it pays off for you. All right, let me get over to the agenda. All right. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents. Do we get, hey, Sylvie, do we got a vote for that? My vote screen just came up.
No, this is for the consent calendar, Mayor, sorry.
That's cool. All right, let me start over. All items on the consent calendar considered routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent counter may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the city council. A council member or any member in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Would my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion?
I don't want to pull them, but I have a couple of comments, and just, I can mention them really quickly.
Go ahead, Wesley.
Okay. So 6.6, I just wanted to say thank you to staff for, actually, I was, it was great seeing some new names, and it looks like we have some solid performers, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. It's great to see new people. On 6.7, I'm going to register a no vote. And 6.10, I wanted to say, I hear residents that we have issues with our contractor and the LMDs, and we're changing that out, and it's going to need some more time. Thank you, staff, for keeping on that. And then thank you to staff for using our SB1 dollars to pave most of my district, so I'm really happy about that, including my own, my own street. So thank you. That's it.
So nobody else wanted to pull anything, right? Ms. Edwards, anybody from the public have anything you want to pull?
Mayor, yes. I have a speaker card for agenda items 6.4 and 6.6.
Okay, whoever, okay, let's vote on everything except 6.4 and 6.6.
Move to approve.
You got Tom and-
Second.
Jackie, please vote.
I don't, oh, there it is.
Okay, that item passes 5-0.
Mayor, can we take a step back on the consent? Oh, wait. Oh, wait. There was nothing on the consent calendar that required the conflict waivers, right? That's coming, that's coming up, okay. Never mind.
Okay, 6.4. Mr. McCoy, was that you? All right.
So I've already reached out to you on this, and I appreciate some of your thoughtful responses on this. I wasn't here for, I wasn't aware of it the first time it came out, which is why I'm here talking this time. I am really against this, and I'm going to lay out the reasons why. I hope you will consider this in your deliberations on it. First of all, Cupca is a state, I guess if you want to call it not regulatory, but a standards that we're using for this to raise these, to raise these spending limits. And number one, we don't need to, and number two, if you know the history behind this, our previous city manager worked every year to try to get it raised. It left a bad taste in everybody's mouth. I think Darrell had it up to about 150 and was trying to push it to 180, and the previous council knocked it back down to 100, which is, I think, where the standards are now and where they've stayed. If you look at our comparables for other cities in the area, Norco, their top is 50, Chino's is 50, Pasadena, which is closest population-wise to us, is 75K, Riverside, which is twice our size, it's 50K. There's no reason for us to have a 220,000 spending limit for our city manager or 75 for our department heads. And it's really, it's an abdication of oversight. We elect the council to make sure that our money is being spent correctly, and allowing this to happen without any type of oversight on this high of a limit is not correct.
Chris, it was set at 150, not 220.
Okay, well, it's saying 220 in the language. I just didn't there right now.
It does say 220 in the language.
Yeah. Yeah, which is over double. So on top of that, there's another piece that's included in here. In Cupca, it's only for capital investment. This ordinance includes it also for maintenance and general services. So we're not talking about building that bridge or things like that. I'm not going to have enough time for this, but I really, we need to pull that language out 100% if you're going to move forward. There's no reason for these limits. There's no reason to raise these limits as high. We need you to be our advocates and make sure that our money is being spent correctly, that we don't have abuse weight and waste going on in the system, that the highest, the cities that have the highest amount of abuse and waste in their systems are cities that raise their limits 100% of the time. It always happens. So I'm really asking you to please consider this, deny it. If our city manager, who I trust, Jacob, I'm not, this is not anything I'm shooting at you at all, just please consider maybe giving him a small raise, giving the department heads a small raise, but this is completely out of it. And Cupca is voluntary. Just, Cupca is not something we have to opt into. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can I just clarify?
Please.
One of those things, we do not mix maintenance and general services into Cupcake. The maintenance and general services limits are lower than the, Cupcake does apply to public works projects, and the same numbers have been used for purchasing of materials, supplies and equipment, but maintenance and general services and professional services are lower. So maintenance is not included within our Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act ordinance.
Okay.
It's not, though.
Let's get some clarification first.
Dean, I just want to mention that for second readings, we attached the staff report from the original city council meeting, so maybe that's the confusion.
That's the first one before we changed it.
So it is, it is the, can you verify the amounts, Dean, just so? The way I read it was 125.
Yeah, you're reading, you're reading from the June 4th agenda report, which is, that's how it was presented to you, but the changes were made on the dais because the maintenance and general services and the professional services were blank when presented to you, and so you gave direction on those, and those two types of contracts, maintenance and general services and professional services, you directed at a lower amount. So I think they're reading from the June 4th agenda report.
But he's not wrong. He is saying the things that are shown on this report. It's just the older report.
It's just the older report, which is attached, yeah. And you made changes on the di-
And the changes that we made on the dais were, what were the limits again? It was 125?
Can somebody remind me, Brett?
For everything.
125 for non-public projects, it's 220 for public projects.
That's not what we said.
I thought we said 125 for everything.
Yes.
No?
Okay, then I'm voting no.
I think that's, that's what our intent was.
Well, we all, that seems like the, at least the four of us.
No, because the only two, the only two types of contracts that were, had blanks from the last time looking for your direction were the maintenance and general services and the professional services.
Nope.
Then maybe we need to table this item.
Yep.
Bring it back to full council.
I think we were all on the same page that we did limit that at the 125 because we kind of agreed with-
Everything.
With what was said.
Then let's just, let's just table this item and bring it back, yeah.
Not understanding the difference.
Okay, so I'll move to, to take this back and-
Table it.
Thank you.
I second.
Yeah. So the motion is to table and bring it back, so please vote. And I think that means if you vote yes, you're voting to bring it back, right?
Right, and what's shown on the screen is not what the motion, the motion we made.
We will ensure that the meeting minutes reflect the updated motion.
Thank you.
All right, so are we voting then?
Yes, on-
And yes is to bring it back.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, Vice Mayor.
Anytime, Mayor.
Okay, then we have, that passes 4-0 with, do we have an abstention there? Oh, Tony, Tom, okay. All right, let's move on then to 6.6. Who wanted to talk about 6.6? Anybody? Bueller? Okay.
I just wanted to say good job, but I didn't pull it.
Okay, so 6.6, going, going, and gone. Let's have a motion.
I moved.
We got Wes and Jackie, please vote. All right. Tabled. Okay, now, we are done with our consent calendar, pickleballers. So we go to communications, sorry it took so long, guys. We're usually done by now. Okay, we're usually done one time ago. All right, communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and the city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we have 22 speaker cards for communications from the public.
Hey, you guys, you know the drill from watching the previous deal there, so feel free to line. And if someone has said the same exact thing that you're going to say, just say ditto because there's really no reason to say the same thing over and over. Thank you for considering that. Joe?
I guarantee I won't be saying the same thing as somebody else will be saying, have said. I want to, I want to thank you for a couple things. One, new fear unlocked that now I have to go and read the second readings because I was here, I heard what you guys said and what you wanted to do, and then to not have the ordinance reflect what was clearly stated in this meeting is, it's a little, it's a little, yeah, yeah, like I said, new fear unlocked is that. And so I want to thank you for the rent stabilization, for that, for how that came out, because I think a few of you, you were here and watched how this thing went down, and then to have a resolution or approaching a resolution at some point is refreshing. I also, and I want to thank you for, on that spending thing, you know, I mean, there was some consideration on that, on that matter, you know, that you guys thought about it and applied reason to the whole thing, so I want to, I want to, I want to thank you for that. Now, okay, so I'm probably going to be the turd in the punch bowl in the rest of the room, and I want to thank you. I don't think that the actions that you took on the pickleball thing were unreasonable. I understand why people, you know, I've got friends that play pickleball. Trust me, I know. So, and I've been talking about this all along. I think you guys didn't know. I saw the kind of like, holy crap, they're building what, where, and it's going to be open when? And the king of D5 didn't know about it, so, which is, you know, I, it's, you know, it's, that says something. And I know why you wouldn't have said it, because I'm sure it was a ministerial thing, and it probably never went farther than the counter. You're like, oh, we want to put some courts. Yeah, so. Yeah.
Let him finish, please, Wes.
So, you know, I think it's, I think it's reasonable to look at it. Maybe it doesn't take six months, maybe, maybe you figure out faster than that, but I think looking at it and, and, now, while I want to thank you, I also want to point out that I think we've, to some extent, gone back to the Talbert model of where we're going to put amenities, which is throwing something at the, throwing something at a map and going, here's where it's going to go. We don't necessarily have the Parks Commission that we had before. We don't necessarily have the parks management that we had before. We have a city manager who feels like he kind of knows, he has his finger on the parks thing. He, that's, that's largely where you think that your expertise lies. I don't necessarily agree with that, and I think we probably would have had a little more consideration about when and where we're going to put that facility, and maybe we would have had a little bit better idea about where the other amenities might be going in, you know? So the fact that you guys want to look at it and go, well, do we want to, do we want to make this investment here, or maybe we can make it there and put it somewhere else as well? Maybe do something else. I, I just want to know. I appreciate the little pause. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
My name is Michael Fenias. I live here in Corona. I think Mayor and I live on the same street, actually. I'm here tonight as a representative of the instrumental music program at Santiago High School, also known as The Boss. And you might recall, The Boss appeared in the January 1st, 2024 Rose Parade, and they like to give tokens of appreciation to organizations to support their journey. Now, we ordered these tokens and received them in 2024. My three-minute time limit precludes me into going into detail as to why there's a delay, but I'm here tonight to put to the test the idea of better late than ever. So I just wanted, I was tasked with delivering this token. It's a picture that says, you know, thank you for supporting The Boss 2024 Rose Parade. I'll leave it with the, the city, the staff here for you to hang wherever you find necessary, but please accept it and apologies for the 18-month delay.
Beautiful. Thank you, sir.
No, it's awesome. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Jennifer. I am actually a Harupa Valley resident, so I'm here on behalf of non-resident pickleball players. There are no pickleball courts in my community, so that forces me to go to another community. Eastville recently opened eight courts. On any given night, there's approximately 50 people in line, so that's four people per court, eight courts. There's approximately 50 people in line waiting to play a game. My Corona pickleball family here has adopted me as one of their own. Thank you. I've been playing for two months. I love pickleball. I'm not going to pay to go to a facility to play pickleball. I'm kind of the middle-aged group here right now for the, we have lots, everyone plays this. This is the fastest-growing sport in America right now. So there's all age groups here, but I'm not going to pay. I'm on a fixed income as well. I'm not going to pay to go to a facility to play pickleball. So I'm looking for public amenities. So I hope that you take this back for reconsideration because it's not just your residents that your beautiful facility would accommodate. It's outside of your city as well because not all cities, Harupa Valley is a, we don't have our own community services there, so we have an outside community services. It's going to be a long time before we get facilities there. So thank you for pickleball here in Corona. This is my home. I drive far to come here. I will keep driving to come here, and they've made it a welcoming place. Not all, Eastville's not a welcoming place to go play pickleball. So I will pass Eastville and come to Corona to play pickleball. So please reconsider this, bring it back, to vote again and build this amazing facility that's going to benefit all age groups, especially your, I learned a lot tonight about your mobile home facilities. Those people need places to go, too, to do things that don't cost them money. So this is going to benefit a lot of people, their health, people that are lonely, there's people that come that are isolated and don't have other people to play with. You're welcome to play at any court in Corona, but, I mean, I've only been there two months. We have to wait in line now at Border Park to play because there's so many people that love it. We're happy to wait in line, but it's growing fast, and so I work during the day, so I can only go play in the evening. That place closes at 8:00. We need something more, so please take it back and reconsider building this awesome facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Desiree Ramirez. I am the vice president at the Corona Chamber of Commerce. Not a pickleballer, sorry. I'm cutting in the line of y'all, I'm so sorry. I'm excited to be here on behalf of the Corona Chamber to share our enthusiasm for one of the most anticipated community events of the year, Taste of Corona. I believe I submitted a flyer. First, a huge thank you to the city and you all, and the Office of Economic Development for the support and partnership. Your support helps us create an event that truly uplifts our business community and connects our residents. Taste of Corona is just, is not just about food, it's about experience. When you attend, you'll enjoy unlimited tastings from now over 60 local food and drink providers from well-known local restaurants such as Reunion Kitchen, Islands Restaurant, and Rodrigo's, to small family-owned businesses such as White Lion and Himalayan Aroma, and entrepreneurs such as Katrina's Wildflower and Pampa Empanadas. You'll also enjoy live music and entertainment from the band Flash Pants, which is a community favorite. And there will also be opportunities to meet local business owners and discover new places to dine and shop right here in Corona, and the chance, and also the chance to directly support our community's small businesses. Every ticket purchased and every bite tasted helps our local economy thrive. We are counting on the community to come out in full force again this year. Let's support these incredible businesses and enjoy a night of connection and flavor. Tickets are only $45 per person with discounts for children and groups. That's including you, pickleballers, group discounts. Tickets are on sale at tastocorona.com. I just want to, again, thank you to the city, leadership, and all of our sponsors to help make this event possible. We look forward to seeing you at Taste of Corona on Saturday, June 28th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Shops at Dos Lagos.
Thanks, Dez.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Deana Lopez Todd, and I'm a resident of Corona for the past 16 years. The city of Corona does offer local and paid, no, wait, sorry, okay, don't you die. Pickleball is the most popular sport in the United States where it originated and has the highest number of players. Nearly 20 million Americans are playing pickleball according to the Sports Fitness Industry Association Top Line Participation Report. The sport growth is at 45.8 year-over-year. There are 16,210 pickleball facilities in the U.S. with more than 70,641 courts, according to pickleball heads, with every single age group seeing increased participation. While many have associated the sport with a higher age participant, the age group with the most participants of 2.3 million is actually the 25 to 34 range, age range group. The sport added over 1 million youth under the age of 18 from 2022 to 2023. This sport of pickleball brings together diverse groups of people and is a highly social sport. The significant increase to engage with pickleball is nationwide and citywide, but yet Corona has one pickleball court that has limited playtime hours, is funded and maintained by the pickleball community, including supplying our own pickleball nets, and we replace the nets when they are damaged. During the heat spells, the community has purchased sunshades- During the heat spells, the community has purchased sunshades. And when they are damaged from the wind and the sun, it is the players that pitch in to purchase new ones. Our neighboring communities have successfully invested in brand-new pickleball courts, I'm sorry, invested in brand-new public courts, completed with a variety of amenities, and some even constructed multiple courts. In contrast, we currently have just one court, which has been temporarily converted from a tennis, tennis court. Unfortunately, our facility lacks bathrooms and nearby water fountains, but despite all of this, there seems to be a hesitating, a hesitation from our city council members regarding the construction of a new public court for the residents of Corona, while cities across, across the nation have. The city of Corona does offer local and paid pickleball lessons, which has been attracting both seasonal and new players to play at Border. Our pickleball community is thriving with participation growing. Players are even extending their playtime to early mornings. Border is always active with playing games, lessons, and drills, taking place seven days a week at the courts. Pickleball is not a trend. The trend is to build courts. The majority of the pickleball players are very longtime residents of Corona who are taxpayers. The financial contribution to our city economy and the ideal that our city council members are holding back to invest in us in a sport that gives us also many benefits. And one should not think we would flock to play at Eagle Glen, Eagle Glen, which is a private paid facility, is not a logical mindset.
Thank you.
Can I just add something really that's really important?
Add something, go right ahead. Add something real quick. You've been waiting a long time.
Please, thank you. Yes, okay.
Make it quick, though.
Okay, 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 okay. I have to read it out, though. Okay. West Coast Pickleball is a private facility in Yorba Linda for their basic membership to pay, to pay to play. The basic, the membership, the annual membership is $15. Then additionally, it costs $10 per open play. So the average single player plays five days a week. That is $250 per month. A couple or a parent that plays with a child, that is $500 per month. And a family of three is $750 per month. So a lot of us cannot afford to even play, but a lot of us play five days a week, even sometimes seven and sometimes twice a day. So there is just seriously.
Guys are out of control.
We do.
You need to get a life.
We do.
Just kidding. All right, thank you. We get your point. It's a lot of money to pay to play.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jerry Miguel, Norco, California. Dear Mayor and City Council, my name is Jerry Miguel. I don't live in Corona, but I'm a dedicated pickleballer at Border Park since April of 2020. At the time, I was obsessed with the sport and was glad to have found the original four temporary courts inside the old basketball area. I was told the future of pickleball in Corona was dedicated courts, but instead, because of COVID and other excuses, six other temporary courts were painted on the two tennis courts, giving Border 10 courts total. I started, started volunteering to put up the nets in the summer of 2020. I was at Borders on that Saturday when we had our fatal heart attack. I've been a fixture at Borders, introduced myself in the sport to newcomers, making everyone know that pickleball wasn't just another fitness of doing sports consistently, but the camaraderie of feeling family. And this sport imbues to our youngest players at the age of 10 to the mature age of 80. It's not unusual to see 40-years difference in the groups playing together. In the summer of 2023, when volunteers were called to work the concert in the park to support getting the AD for Border, I became a mainstay at the Bear Garden checking IDs. Were able to secure enough fundage for the AD, which is placed in the park in January of 2024. Maybe some of you might recognize me in the ads Corona has for the present concert in the park, of me sharing my nacho experience. I also volunteered for the 24, 24 season at the concert in the park. Even the park rangers of the park that locked down Borders know me by name to help clear the park by the 8:00 PM closing. I do not mention my dedication to Borders and pickleball to pat myself on the back, but to make a point. Why are other cities taking pickleball seriously? Temecula with 17 courts, Eastville with eight courts, Riverside with the new nine courts, Big Bear with 10 and eight courts in two of their four facilities, to name a few, while Corona votes to delay another six months to see how a paid facility in Eagle Glen will do? I am, I am one of many that give to our pickleball program, who like to see pickleball given more than a few coats of paint and a vote to funding back the 2026 budget. The benefits of having our own park will help alleviate the complaints from the neighbors' noise, and we will close other part, like other parks at 10 or 12, 10:30. Thank you for your time and hopefully for your vote to please reconsider the funding for El Cerrito Park.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Steven Young. I live in Corona. I play pickleball every day at Border Park. I've grown to love the sport, but as a son of a single parent who cannot afford paid facilities, please allocate funds to build new pickleball courts at El Cerrito Park so others like me can keep playing. Don't pause the project. This means a lot to our community. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steven.
Hello, my name is Ryan Tran. I've been a resident of Corona for over 25 years. I want to make this short and sweet. What about us? I am, I speak on behalf of the tennis community. And there's already been three places that tennis courts have been converted to pickleball. Houston Park, the tennis court has been converted to pickleball. Border Park used to be tennis courts, converted to pickleball. There's also two other pickleball courts added to Delaio Park. The tennis community, I'm just here to say that we exist in Corona. We're very large. Me and my USTA team, our tennis league, we ran out courts through the city of Corona to play tennis. So I understand that the demand for pickleball is very large. It just would sadden me to see that at the expense of the tennis community. Imagine tennis players coming to El Cerrito or whatever park for years and years just to see it get torn down for a different sport. Not only that, but tennis needs more resources from the city of Corona. Tennis courts need resurfacing, need lights. So not only would converting El Cerrito take away your tennis courts, but like we, I'm trying to advocate for the city to put more resources towards our tennis courts. So just in conclusion, I understand pickleball, they need a place to play. They're always coming to our tennis courts. I want them to have their own facility. I want them to have a place to play so they don't come to our tennis courts. You know, I, I play tennis a lot. They play twice a day. Sometimes I play twice, three times a day. So I hope that the city can come up with a solution just to allocate more resources to build them a whole other park, build them new pickleball courts, have them do their own thing. Because pickleball is not going away. We understand that as the tennis community. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Hello, my name is Julie Trapp. I'd like to voice my, I'd like my voice to be heard regarding this pause of the pickleball project at the El Cerrito Sports Park. The pickleball community in Corona is quite large. And what I've researched over the past couple of weeks is that the pickleball courts at Border Park were first established seven years ago, 2017, just four courts, described by many as temporary. As the number of players grew, six more courts were added over the water reservoir in 2021, again described only as temporary. Here, we are seven years later, and the seemingly temporary courts are still the largest collection of courts that Corona has. After collaboration with a community member, Mike Wagner, I ask you to consider this fact as well. Even if building the court stays paused, consider that his, the history I gave you, Mr. Dodario's comments about repurposed courts is a bit, it's troublesome. And for one of the reasons he just said. There have been a few backyard courts built among our members, and the consensus seems to be that a brand-new lighted court can be completed for around $35,000. The budgeted amount for the city courts are 1.1 million. Why on earth do we need to repurpose existing facilities when 1.1 million could demolish the existing or build next to them? There is land there. And build a true pickleball facility built for pickleball. Temecula recently figured out how to do it. Eastville has just opened up. Riverside figured out how to do it. And guess what? The community of players at Border Park still, with all these facilities open, still wait in line to play morning and play night at Border. Why can't Corona follow suit? Well, I ask you this week, and one of the answers I got was we need to be fiscally responsible. Then listen to your constituents and be fiscally responsible with the budgeted monies. Here's an idea. While repurposing sounds like we're making good use of something already there, instead of starting from scratch, the fact is more often than not, pickleball courts built on pre-existing facilities often have sizing or spacing problems. A recent article about an indoor facility in Ohio describes 38 indoor courts that cost 2.5 million. If 1.1 can't build us new, true pickleball facility with 10 or 12 courts, something's wrong. Lastly, I'm asking for a brave leader, one of you, to make a motion and unpause the budgeted money going forward with a pickleball facility. Now that the council realizes it isn't a fad, it's the fastest-growing sport four years in a row, I've personally played with people that are 10 years old and people that are 78 years old at Border, and it will continue, and we will continue to play at El Cerrito, even when the private company comes in and adds courts that citizens will have to pay to play. One is not dependent on the other. Unless the council pauses the planning of a restaurant because another's going in, or perhaps pauses a school because a charter school is opening up in the neighborhood, that doesn't happen. Do you pause a playground being built because we open a trampoline park? No, you don't. The courts at El Cerrito should not be paused because of Eagle Glen. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Anderson. I lived in Corona for 22 years. This is the first time I've ever felt a need to get up here, and yes, it is regarding pickleball. So I know you're probably thinking, what is all the hype? Because I used to think the same thing. It's just a game with a funny name, until I was invited to go play chickleball one Tuesday morning, two years ago at Border. I was taken in by the women. They taught me how to play, taught me the rules, and then played with me, even though I played horribly. They took the time, and I was hooked and came back every week. And now, like so many others have said, I play up to five times a week. But here's the thing. It wasn't just the game itself that kept me coming back. It was the sense of community, the friendships I was forming, the opportunity for me, a middle-aged, stay-at-home, almost-empty nester, to be part of something outside my home. It provided exercise and sunshine, and though I didn't understand it at the time, it was helping me with my depression and my anxiety. It was an outlet I didn't know I needed. Pickleball is the very definition of community. We organize lunches and support local restaurants. When someone is injured or going through a difficult time, we take them meals. We check in with each other. If you're gone for a while, people notice and they check on you to make sure you're okay. They make you feel like you belong. It's amazing how excited our newcomers get to discover there's a place for them to learn and play the game of pickleball, especially during chickleball with other women. The problem, as you've heard, is the courts at Border are packed. So I kind of am in charge now of running chickleball, and I've been looking at how many people we've had each week. And we always have, over the last few weeks, at least 40 women. And we share the courts with other players. So that's 40 women on usually about six courts. And that's on a Tuesday morning, even if it's 85 degrees, we are there playing. And it's like that every day of the week. 10 courts for a city as large as Corona are not enough. Pickleball is unique in that people can just show up and play, even if they don't have a group organized, even if they don't have friends that play, they're going to make friends there. They come to be part of the community, and we feel the city needs to provide a space for this to happen. So if you're wondering why so many of us are upset about a short pause or delay, it's because these courts are already overdue. As you've heard, other communities have figured out a way to do it, and we don't feel like we should have to pay to play at Eagle Glen. I understand that the city has a lot of needs and that pickleball might be an easy thing to push aside. However, I would argue that the pickleball community is something that Corona should be proud of and willing to support. We ask that you move forward with the plans that you already had to build new courts at El Cerrito, help us continue to grow this community, and provide a large, safe space for men and women of all ages and backgrounds to come together in a healthy and positive way. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Larry Burrell, I am the current USA Pickleball Ambassador for the city of Corona. Good evening.
Hi, Larry.
Mayor Steiner and the city council members. On behalf of the pickleball community and myself, I am requesting that the city council reconsider the decision made on delaying the court construction at El Cerrito Park. Public courts do not have anything to do with private courts. This goes against the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and following the capital improvement project schedule. We have been working with the city and staff and Parks and Recreation Commissioners since 2007 to get properly installed pickleball courts and facilities in our community. You are adding unnecessary delay. Get it done for the pickleball community and homeowners near Border Park. In comparison, the private pool across from City Park that people take lessons, and so you don't need a public pool at a city park because this is a private pool across the street. To date, as mentioned, some of the stats, it's overwhelming, not just the United States, we're talking the world now. Pickleball has exploded, as we said and, and will continue to say. It's approximately 50 million. That's one-fourth of the United States population. And, and you owe it to the pickleball community and the homeowners near Border Park. Lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Steiner and Mr. Speak for supporting the pickleball community. Mr. Dodario, thank you for showing up Saturday. I, I appreciate that immensely, and we had a conversation. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for coming, really do. And the rest of the city council members, thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Hello, Council. My name is Tyler Sundberg. I am a resident of Corona. I've been here for 21 years with my family. My wife has been here for 42 years. We live in the house she grew up in. And we are about a stone's throw away from the El Cerrito Sports Park. But I will be the unpopular one with this group because I would say, please leave the tennis courts alone. My family's journey into tennis started about 11 years ago with my oldest daughter. We have five children, all of them play tennis. My two oldest ones graduated from Santiago High School playing tennis. We're both the captain of their tennis team. And my second daughter currently plays tennis at RCC. My 15-year-old plays tennis for Santiago. She's a freshman or will be a sophomore. And my 11-year-old twin boys currently are learning competitive tennis as we speak. We are on those courts six days a week. We practice there all the time. And as a father, the opportunity to teach my kids discipline, how to work hard, how to get along with others, but also to teach them how to win and how to lose, has been one of the best joys of my life. I am on the courts with them literally almost every day. And to see those courts go away would be a travesty. I have spent my time as a dad being able to talk with my kids on the tennis court. I agree that the pickleball players should have their own facilities, but not at the expense of our tennis courts. So I hope that you can take that into consideration and know that there are two communities out there, both tennis and pickleball. We all need a home. But please don't do that at the expense of our tennis community because it's a huge community, and we love it.
Thanks, Tyler.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carlos Dejada. I'm a resident here of Corona. Been playing tennis for about 20 years of my life. Without public courts, I wouldn't have made it to tennis captain. I wouldn't be the player I am today. I wouldn't be able to participate in USTA or any of the, any of the fundamental tennis activities that there are. Tennis has been a huge part of my life. Got to say, the El Cerrito courts are some of the, I think, the best courts in Corona. They're like the best maintained. It would really stink to see them go. I want to have, same as Tyler, I want to have the space for both of us to thrive together. We shouldn't be pitting each other against each other. We got to have our own spaces. Same thing how the, how lady came up and brought up how private pickleball courts are expensive or private. or private tennis courts at country clubs are probably double, triple that cost. I can't afford that, living on a single rent. I would have to say, like, compared to pickleball tennis courts, like, it's four players per court. We need, you need more tennis courts to accommodate more tennis players. A tennis court can house maybe like between 12 to 16 pickleball players, so there's less space needed. And at El Cerrito, there's plenty of space to build new facilities. It would be, I mean, it's just think about it like this. What if you go and take your son, daughter, to play soccer every single day, and then one day you come, and then there's a baseball field there? That doesn't make any sense to me. I just want to ensure that, obviously, the pickleball court community is growing and thriving, but at the same time, we need to still accommodate all the tennis players. It's, I still go to, I mean, I go to the other tennis courts, Mountain Gate, Eagle Glen. We're waiting too for those courts. Like, we're waiting, we're waiting for the tennis players to get off. Sometimes there's even pickleball players there for temporary play. Like, we're waiting just as long as them, so just looking for, looking for you guys to like just create your two separate facilities so both of our communities can continue to thrive in Corona.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Juby Perez. I'm a highly competitive tennis player. I have known the El Cerrito tennis courts almost all my life. These courts have been a huge support to my tennis career and continue to support it. I go to school in Corona, and I am dependent on these courts to practice my game. Tennis is not only a major part of my life, but is a foundation of El Cerrito Park's overall community. Many high schoolers, kids, and families rely on these courts all year round. Tennis courts are somewhat specialties that run short around the community, so removing these courts would just continue to lessen the number. As a competitive player, I travel around different towns and cities and would like to say I have seen pickleball overtaking beautiful tennis courts, which is saddening to see. In saying this, tennis is a sport like no other. It has been around for generations upon generations and connects everyone from all backgrounds to come together. By removing these courts, it would be like removing a piece of the community, so please save our tennis courts.
Thank you.
I know it's late. It won't take long. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I am, my name is Chuck Perez, and that was my daughter. But I am a pastor, and this, I came right from church out in Bloomington. I was guest speaking, just to get here to say this. Tennis, besides God, God used tennis and El Cerrito Park to save my life. I had open-heart surgery almost 10 years ago, and it was tennis, actually, that got me going to get back into shape, even though I'm not where I need to be, but I'm getting there. And just to actually look up at the sky, and it was at El Cerrito Park. Been here, I've been, I'm a Corona native, I've been here my entire life. And I have nothing against pickleball. I'm very interested, actually, to be honest with you. I don't, but I don't want to see pickleball courts take the place of tennis. I think we can coexist. And I have a suggestion. I'm not one good with land, but there is an area where there's storage at El Cerrito. They have storage sheds there. There's a good lot there that can be turned into pickleball courts without harming the tennis courts. All I see is storage sheds there, and they go in there and they get all the soccer balls out or whatever, and they can move that somewhere else. But I would hate to see El Cerrito Park used for, overrun the tennis. I mean, tennis has been such a blessing to all of us, and like I said, pickleball, I'll learn it someday, but tennis is my primary sport. And so I would ask you to just really consider not taking those two courts. That's all we got. We play there five days a week. We're there. Our whole family's been there. Our son, he's not here right now, but our son, our daughter, my wife, we're busy, we're there all the time whenever there's a court, and there are becoming less and less courts available. Like you said, they're at country clubs right now. Country clubs are too expensive. You have to be a member. This is where we can actually go to the park and play tennis. And we've seen pickleball players come and use it, you know, when they can. It bothered me at first, doesn't bother me now, but it bothered me at first, but I said, okay, they got their time, we got our time, right? But it can't be, I would hate to see those courts torn up and just not used for tennis. So please keep El Cerrito tennis, those two courts for tennis. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. Most of my pickleball friends have already said everything that I wanted to say, but much more eloquently than I could. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points that I thought were important. One is that a new private pickleball club is not a substitute for a public space. A private pickleball club called West Coast Pickleball opened in December of last year, seven miles away from Border. Many of us tried it, but returned to Border. Why? Because we value more than just courts, we value community. Public parks bring together all walks of life, not just those who can afford private memberships. I know one person who plays at West Coast, but still comes to Border three to four times a week because she loves the community experience. The public setting fosters affordable community connection that no private alternative can replicate. I also wanted to point, reiterate that Border's 10-court setup is more than just a place to play, it's a social hub. Pickleball is a community sport. I've made countless new friends there, and I see people every day connecting across ages, races, and income levels. I think this is the kind of community spirit worth supporting and investing in. Border's already a special place, but it must, if it must be closed, please replace it with something equally exceptional. Please don't delay this any longer for the health, equity, and connectedness of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Fuller.
My name's Don, my name's Don Fuller. I'm a resident here. Sorry to spoil the party. I'm not here for pickleball. I want to commend a lot of the citizens of this town, and I especially want to commend the Police Department. I had a No Kings protest at the corner of Rimpa and Ontario. I put in four hours there, and my grandson knew I was going to be participating in the protest. He called me up. He goes to college in Fullerton. He called me up, wanted to know if he could join his granddad at the protest, said yes. So it was a granddad-grandson moment. And after that, I went over in the evening, and I did the Riverside protest there as well. So I was, it was number six and seven for me on the protest list since the current convicted felon has been inaugurated. And everybody behaved very, very well. The crowd was large, it was enthusiastic, it was loud, it was motivated. And one thing I've noticed over the last few months is when these protests first started happening, it was mostly a bunch of old people like me. But now the crowds have changed. We're getting folks of all ages, people coming out with their families, bringing their kids. I saw one kid, he's 11 years old, carrying a sign, "Good for Him." And the crowds are every single bit of a cross-section of America you could want. We're all united by one common cause, a seething disgust for that corrupt convicted felon who occupies our White House. So I want to commend the Police Department for their exemplary behavior. I was looking around for him, and I noticed a couple of cruisers and one motorcycle, but they were being very, very discreet. And I find out that they had about 10 or so officers just sort of watching, but we all got along very, very well. I've told Chief Newman here, we may be seeing each other more and more as time goes on because he's got about three and a half more years to go with this, and we're not giving up on it. The truth of the matter is that the convicted felon gave himself a very, very expensive birthday party. He asked the men and women of the United States Army to arrange it and put it on for him, and he asked the rest of us to pay for it. And when all that was said and done, the cool kids didn't come to the party. The cool kids were having their own parties. So this is going to go on, but I do want to continue, I do want to thank the citizens of the town. It was a great event, and I want to thank very, very much Chief Newman and the police officers in town. See, I'm even getting a nodded head from you over there, right? So for keeping everything on the up and up, and we will continue to be enthusiastic, and we will continue to be peaceful, nonviolent. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Don.
My name's Kathy Morgan. I moved to Corona in 1984, moved in next door to Bob DeVries, and I'm reading his letter. Honorable members of the Corona City Council, I am writing to urge you to reconsider and withdraw the recent decision to pause approval of the budget for the proposed El Cerrito pickleball facility. The notion that a nearby private pay-to-play pickleball complex will draw all potential users away from a free, city-funded facility is unfounded and lacks supporting evidence. The popularity and demand for accessible public pickleball courts continues to grow rapidly across all communities, and the existence of a private facility does not eliminate the need for equitable public access to the sport. The suggestion of some council members to wait and see what happens after the opening of a nearby 17-court private facility demonstrates a concerning lack of engagement with both the broader pickleball community and local residents. It also suggests that insufficient research has been done into the proven sustained demand for free and inclusive recreational facilities, a need that cannot be fulfilled solely by private, fee-based alternatives. As one member of the council wisely pointed out in the last meeting, effective local government requires responsiveness to new information and a willingness to evolve decisions in the public's interest. Other members also acknowledged during this discussion that the private facility will not significantly impact the viability or value of a city-provided alternative. In light of this understanding and the clear local interest in accessible pickleball facilities, I respectfully request that the council lift the pause and proceed with approving the budget for the El Cerrito pickleball facility without further delay. This project reflects a meaningful investment in the community's health, recreation, and well-being. Thank you for your time, your service, and your thoughtful reconsideration of this matter. Bob DeVries.
Thank you very much.
I'm Rob Morgan. This is my wife. She speaks much better than I do. I'm a Corona resident. We bought our home here 41 years ago. I'm disappointed to learn that you've chosen to pause the funding to build Corona's first real pickleball facility. I agree with many of the other speakers about the growth in the sport. It is exploding. One account that I read from Market Reports, Market Report something or other, I don't have the exact name, said that we grew 223% over three years between 2022 and 2024. That's in line with some of the other stats I've heard. I've heard some statistics that say we are between 36 and 50 million people within this country who play pickleball. I don't know the validity of that, but if you translate that across just population centers, it tells me that Corona could potentially have as many as, if you take, say that's 10% of the population that plays, we could have 1,600 people that play in Corona. I'm not sure I believe that, but I wouldn't doubt that it's at least 25% of that. I'm fortunate enough to play in many places with friends as well as in tournaments. One city that stands out to me is Bakersfield. They have three public parks with 26 very nice pickleball courts, and three more public parks with 12 more what I'll call substandard pickleball courts. That's 38 public courts for a population of 419,000 people. Incidentally, they have about 20 private courts that I'm aware of, and they may have more. I was at their Jastro Park facility last Wednesday at 7:00 AM with all 12 courts filled and people waiting to play. And that's not atypical. It's very common around the country. I urge you to do a little research on your own. Have you seen any of the hundreds, if not thousands, of YouTube videos available about pickleball? Pickleball's being taught at many public and private schools. There are college teams currently competing in pickleball. Vacation destinations are adding pickleball to their offerings. Many cruise ships now have pickleball. We have professional pickleball players these days, a number coming out of professional tennis, to take up the sport with such a silly name. It's only a matter of time before pickleball will be an Olympic sport. I urge you to fund and build the courts we desperately need in Corona, and start thinking about the next facility that you're going to need to build. I welcome members of the council to contact me individually if you'd like to learn more about the sport, and please do so soon because I'm one of the players in their 70s. I love the sport, and I don't know how much longer I'm going to be around. Thank you very much.
Good point. Thank you.
Hello. I'm going to keep this pretty short. I got reminded that something else happened Saturday. That was very important, and I want to give a shout out to Chief Young and all of the people that participated in Flag Day. Thank you. It's very important, I was explaining to him, my dad served in both the Army and the Air Force, and the flag was very important to him. So even though he's no longer with us, I felt that it was really important for me to pay homage to him for Father's Day. And I don't know how some of the firefighters out in full gear, were out in the heat, burning flags, bless their hearts. Very important day that day, and I just want to thank everybody that participated, and I wish that there had been more participation. So thank you again. It's really appreciated.
Thanks, ma'am.
Good evening, Council members. I'm Ron Chappell. I've lived in Corona for about 15 years now. I'm from the East Coast. But one thing I'd like to say out here is, as much as I came out here to talk about pickleball, I think you really deserve a chance or deserved opportunity for y'all to look and resolve this rent issue. Pickleball is fun, but this rent controls so many people's lives. Never knew it till I came tonight. Never knew it till I came tonight, but I mean, it really does. So I would challenge y'all to be able to finish that within 120 days. Challenge y'all. Come up with a way. Also, again, go back to pickleball. I'm a fan of pickleball. I play it quite a bit. Many things. There's a lot of downsides to postponing it. I'm all for keeping the money in the budget, so I'd like for y'all to look at that, see what y'all can do for that. I'm not for taking tennis courts. I mean, when I came up here, El Cerrito, I thought it was really just saying, hey, you're going to put pickleball courts there. Now I find out that this is actually taking away from somebody else. We've got to learn how we both get along with this. So I just challenge y'all to say, hey, come up the way, keep it into the budget, and come up the way to do what's right for everyone. Eagle Glen is not the answer. Okay? So at this time, I just respectfully request for the City Council to reconsider their vote and put the money back in. Put it somewhere in this area of the construction. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Excuse me, I have a cold. I just want to say I live on west, east of Fullerton, nearby El Cerritos, basically, and I drive to Border Park. I want to just add my voice to everybody here that we really need this pickleball place where we can have like Border and El Cerritos, so we don't have to drive a long distance. And I really want to, you know, stress how much it's important for our exercise. I'm going to be 17 about five months, and I really need to do the exercise as well as socializing with everybody. You know, when I come to the, sometimes I miss like a month or two. Everybody, when I walk in, call my, or shout my name from a distance, "Hey, Faisal." My name is Faisal. And I really love it, you know? I feel like I miss them all. So you guys know me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Mayor. Hold on one sec. So this was kind of a new twist tonight with the tennis players coming out. We might have to build an octagon and let Larry Burrell do the referee between the tennis players and the pickleball players, but so I know a lot of you would So I know a lot of you have asked for reconsideration. That would require a council member who's reconsidered to put it a future agenda item, to put it back on the agenda, so.
Mayor, with your permission, Jacob, can we move pickleball to a future agenda item?
And do we need a majority?
You would want to give that direction.
I would support that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll be moving that up, guys, but be aware, this could be a little bit different discussion, so just keep that in mind, but we will be talking about it sooner rather than later. And thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there, you guys. We really appreciate it. This would be a good time to get the hell out of here if you want because we got a lot more to talk about. All right, we're going to move on to...
Chief ran too.
Chief, you gotta stay, brother. You gotta stay. All you people in the front row, you gotta stay.
I think Joanne's asking to go too, I think, but...
Joanne's been ready for a couple hours, as well as me, Joanne. All right, we got a public hearing. Confirming the diagram and assessment for lighting maintenance district number 84-1 for fiscal year 2026 and to detach certain territory from the district. Does anybody want a staff report on this?
Is this the one I was supposed, I'm supposed to recuse from? No. This one. You will tell me. Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Ms. Edwards, has the city clerk's office received correspondence or any speaker cards from the public regarding this item?
Mayor, we did not receive correspondence or speaker cards for this item.
Public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? We have a motion from Wes. Second from Tom. Please vote.
Councilmember speak, Councilmember Dario.
Wake up, boys. Passes 508.2, public hearing confirming the diagram and assessment for lighting maintenance district number 2003-1 for fiscal year 2026. Any councilmember want a staff report on this item?
No, thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Ms. Edwards, city clerk's office received any correspondence on any speaker cards for this item?
Mayor, we did not receive correspondence or speaker cards for this item.
Any questions? Our public hearing is now closed. Any questions from my colleagues?
No.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Done. Wes motioned and I seconded.
All right, please vote. Passes 508.3, public hearing confirming the diagram and assessment within zones 1, 2, 4, 6, 7, 10, 15, 17, 18, and 19 of Landscape Maintenance District number 84-2 for fiscal year 2026. Any councilmember want a staff report on this item?
No, thank you.
All right, public hearing is now open. Congratulations. Kim, you're getting off the hook tonight, or did you already sneak out another here? Ms. Edwards, city clerk's received any correspondence?
We did not receive correspondence or speaker cards.
Public hearing is now closed. Any comments from my colleagues?
No, thank you.
Motion, please.
I'll move to approve.
Jackie and?
Wes.
Jackie and Wes, please vote. All right.
Councilmember Dario.
Passes 508.4 is public hearing confirming the diagram and assessment within zone 14 of Landscape Maintenance District number 84-2 for fiscal year 2026.
Motion.
We have a recusal?
Yes, this is the one I recuse myself from.
Vice America says she's recusing herself because she lives in that district.
Yeah.
Oh, you got to leave, huh?
It's okay. I'll stretch my legs.
Beat it, beat it.
I'll tag you out.
We're going to make this quick.
Don't go far.
Don't go far. Any staff member want to report on this item?
Nope.
Public hearing is now open. Ms. Edwards, city clerk received any correspondence?
Mayor, we did not receive correspondence or speaker cards for the item.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Nope.
Do you have a motion? Anyone? Okay, we have a motion. A second. Please vote. Passes four with one abstaining because that's Jackie. Okay.
I do abstain myself from the...
You're on the next one. Yeah, got it. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, this is 8.5, public hearing confirming the diagram and assessment within zone 20 of Landscape Maintenance District number 84-2 for fiscal year 2026. Councilmember speak has to recuse himself because he lives within that district. Does any councilmember want a staff report on this item?
No, thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Ms. Edwards, has the city clerk's office received correspondence or any speaker cards from the public regarding this item?
Mayor, we have not received correspondence or speaker cards for the item.
Thank you, Sylvia. Public hearing is now closed. Have any questions or comments from my colleagues? Apparently not. We have a motion from Tom. A second from who?
Second.
From Jackie. Please vote. Passes 40. You want to get Wesley? All right, 8.6, resolution number 2025-080, establishing an application fee for an outdoor sidewalk dining permit and outdoor retail kiosk permit. Any councilmember want a staff report on this item?
No. No, thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Ms. Edwards, has the city clerk's office received correspondence or any speaker cards from the public regarding this item?
Mayor, we did not receive correspondence or speaker cards for the item.
Public hearing is now closed. Do I have any questions or comments from my colleagues?
No, thank you.
Can I please get a motion in a second? It's already there. Tony and Tom, please vote. Okay, this one probably take a few minutes longer. The administrative reports is the adoption of Skyline El Master, Skyline Area Master Plan. Moses Cortez Parks and Trails Manager will present this item.
Good evening, council. Thank you. I am here to present the Skyline Area Master Plan to you guys. And the ask this evening is that the city council adopt the Skyline Area Master Plan. The Skyline Area Master Plan, the vision of it is to preserve the 292 acres of the Skyline Area in its natural state for the benefit of current and future generations. The plan is organized in five main sections: the vision and framework, background and history, planning process, recommendations, and an implementation plan to accompany it. Little bit of background and history. The area is comprised of 292 acres of land on the southwest border of Corona. It is by far our most popular hiking destination, Corona, with a gateway into the Cleveland National Forest that allows for opportunities for biking, hiking, and running. The area was originally planned for housing, which consisted of 63 single-family homes. This would have blocked public access into the Cleveland National Forest, and the city purchased the land in 2020 to protect it and maintain the access and open space. And again, in 2024, the city adopted a resolution to reaffirm that the city's intent is to preserve the area in its natural state with some minor amenities. The planning process included an inventory of our existing trails, citywide surveys on their desired amenities that they would, their desired amenities that they would like to see in the Skyline Area, outreach events and meetings to discuss residents' priorities for the Skyline Area, and ensure that the plan represented the true interests of the community and what they wanted to see there. So we did an online survey that was conducted from July to August 30th of 2024. There was three different categories I want to point out. We did an open participation for all residents to be able to participate. We did a random sample to make sure that we were getting a true sample of all the community throughout the city and not just a select few, as well as our Orchard Glen residents, which back up to the Cleveland, or to the Skyline Area. When it was all setting down, we received almost 1,200 participants in the survey. The survey results consisted of, sorry, my eyes are not that good, 1,1108 of the open, 67 of the random, and 20 from Orchard Glen. And with that, some of the top categories included the restrooms, followed by trail maps, water fountains, and trail signage. We have five different proposed walking circuits that provide convenient and easy access for walking trails. They keeps the area in its natural state and also serves as fire breaks. These five different trails give you a range from one mile all the way up to a little over two miles, to be, 2.2, 2.25 to be exact. Another recommendation is to install kiosks. These kiosks will be utilized to allow hikers and mountain bikers to make sure that they prepare for their hike or their mountain bike ride accordingly. So we'll talk about hydration, rattlesnake or other kind of wildlife safety. Pack in, pack out, don't leave any litter or trash up there. No radios or amplified noise. Pick up after your pets, and emergency contact information. There'll also be trail signage along the trails themselves, and that'll identify the trail name, the trail difficulty, what is and what is not permitted, as well as being aware and respectful of hikers and mountain bikers sharing trails.
Mr. Cortez?
Yes.
Really quick, I've always wondered this because I'm obviously not a hiker, but...
Say it like that. A little bit creepy.
But, but how is like cellphone coverage up there? I wonder, especially because of rattlesnakes, right? So you got to, you get bit by a snake, you got to call somebody to come and save you. So how is cellphone coverage up there?
It is a little spotty in certain areas.
It is?
Yeah, especially once you get back in the Hagador Canyon. It is rather spotty.
Is, has there ever been any look, you know, any information gone over about, I don't know, cell amplifiers or something like that, like at these kiosks that would amplify a signal? I'm not talking about like a huge cell tower, but something small that could help amplify for emergency purposes?
It isn't anything that we've looked at as part of this, but something we can do some research on. We do usually, the Rangers do have radios with them should there be an incident up there, but again, we're not there 24/7.
Right.
This is real quick. We do have that tower going in at Chase and Mangular that might help some of that area, but when you get back in those canyons, I think your best bet, at least right now, is that you have so many people there that somebody's going to find you, laying there in a heap.
Not they're going to find me.
They're going to find you.
All right, good. Okay, thank you. No, no, good, thank you. So the trail maps will be in these kiosks, and the, it'll, the trail maps will be identified with the IMBA difficulty ratings, which is a recreational rating system used to identify the difficulty of trails. These will be available at all our trail kiosks, and there'll also be a QR code that you can scan so you can have that on your phone once you start your hike. Recommendations, maintenance standards, outlines ongoing maintenance standards and functions throughout the year, policies and practices which provide objective guidelines for trail and open space uses, fire prevention, which ensures that we're maintaining the area in a safe manner and best practices for safety, and voluntary opportunities which outline opportunities for residents to give back to the Skyline Open Space to connect with staff and trail users. And there's more details of all this outlined in the appendices if you wanted to look through that. And I also want to note that the Skyline Plan does align with the city's general plan. So we have the implementation plan, which is outlined there on the right. This will take place over a course of three years. And I also want to point out, there's a kind of a little square highlighted area at the top, and that just points out where the restroom would be going. The restroom will be near infrastructure over off of Barrera Way for sewer and water connections, and it'll also allow for easy maintenance and service of the restroom facility. And that's right there at the end of the paved trail, right where it turns into the dirt road going up Skyline. So next steps is, like I mentioned, a three-year timeline, and we will, our next steps will be to explore volunteer opportunities to be able to outline, identify and execute on some of these items in the implementation plan, plan projects for future fiscal years, and pursue any grant opportunities to help offset costs. And again, the ask is that the city council adopt the Skyline Area Master Plan, and with that, I'll be available for any questions or comments. I also want to, Brett Dawson's behind us, our trail planner, and I just want to give him a shout out for this. He put a lot of time and effort into this, so a lot goes out to him.
Great, thanks, Moses, and thanks, Brett. We know you worked hard on that, buddy. Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards from the public on this item?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards, but we do have written comments. Would you like me to read those?
Was that the one from Dwight?
Yes.
Is that just the one?
Yes.
Yeah, you can read it real quick.
The plan appears to have been well thought out. I would like to point out that there is no mention of e-mor cycles being prohibited from riding the trails. Even though the dirt road is County Road, I am only referring to the single-track trails. I have attached a video to describe the issue. When it comes to e-bikes, I would suggest only allow one, Class 1 e-bikes. Besides that, the plan is great, and I look forward to seeing it being implemented.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Any comments from my colleagues on this, questions or comments? I think Councilmember Speaks is going to ask probably a lot of questions that probably cover, so there's no point in redundancy, so I'll let him go first, and if there's anything that he misses.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, first of all, great, great job. I think it covers a lot of the bases, but I do think there's probably a couple of things that need to get added. I did notice on, I love word clouds, so on page 22 of the report, they had, you guys have a word cloud on there that basically says, besides, you know, people's favorite thing, which is leave it alone, that was number one, so can't do that. That's not what we want to do. But number two was improve parking insecurity. And there's no, really no mention, additional mentions of how we're going to do that. I know that's going to be on our PD, Public Works, and how we're going to come together to provide some more safety, and I don't mean, you know, parking officers there because that's not a good use, but I know we've talked about in the past about having more cameras, and I know we have some line-of-sight issues and some other things, but the more popular this becomes, and it already, I don't know how much more popular it can get, this issue is going to rear its ugly head here if we are, already haven't gotten a lot of, you know, vehicle break-ins. And I know that, you know, I get, it's a tough thing to hear over and over again, so I'd like to see some mention of it in the plan and how, you know, what we can do and what can be done in order to do that. I did see that we were going to install security cameras at the trailheads and signage, improving lighting conditions near the trailhead and lighting, you know, at the parking areas, presence of additional park rangers, but I think that's more on the trail, which is where they should be. And then a bell station for mountain bikers and at their trailheads. I think that's a great idea, too, just so people can know there. I think Dwight's comments were, are good. I'm seeing issues with folks on those bikes, and I probably called the non-emergency number more than most people do about the, about the, some of the idiots that are driving around on these things and can imagine what they're doing on a trail. In my, my day job, I've worked for lots of parks departments. One of the ones I did work for early in my career was Royo Seco for the city of Pasadena, and their issue with Royo Seco was that, I mean, you go out there, we were trying to do surveys for endangered species, and there's people everywhere. And then what they were having is people were doing, were creating rogue trails, so they didn't want to walk where everybody else walked. They wanted to create their own. So they started doing plannings of cacti and other things to keep people on the trails and not off creating their own, because I think we're going to have issues with folks going down and getting stuck in a ravine or going up the side of the hill and falling, and we're going to have more, more calls for public safety. So I want to really, I think that a lot of it can be done with vertical mulching or, you know, plantings that can be done by volunteers, but I think that definitely needs to be part of it. I don't, I think the trails that are outlined there, I think, are good, but I want to make sure that they don't expand and we start seeing people in places they shouldn't be in, both for safety reasons or for frankly ecological reasons. You know, the biggest spread for non-native species is people. And, you know, maybe there's some education that can be done as well, and people cleaning their boots off between, or, you know, their hiking shoes when they go into an area so they're not traipsing in non-native species that are going to really, you know, frankly destroy some of those areas. So the, you know, one of the worst things for natural areas is people, so we can find ways to keep them in, you know, in check and in places where they're not going to destroy things that are degrade. I know that's, that was a big portion in the, in the report as well, and I think see that, you know, beefed up a little bit. Let's see, safety patrols, non-native, yep, e-bike, yeah, all good. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, did you say anything that you weren't going to say?
Yeah, I think really the only thing that I, that I would, I didn't understand what Dwight's comments were about the e-bikes as far as like the different classifications. I'm assuming the ones that he doesn't want up there are the ones that don't have pedals. They're the ones that look like electric motorcycles, you know, that you can't, there's not a pedal option with those. I'm assuming those are the ones that, that they're hoping aren't allowed up there. I actually, you know, I don't disagree that the people that have those bikes do a lot of stupid things with them. do a lot of stupid things with them on the streets usually. But there's very few places that they could ride those types of things. And they're not gas-powered engines, so there's not like the damage that you, that everybody says about gas-powered engines and these types of things. I guess I'm okay with them up there and we'll have to figure that out if it becomes a problem, but that's my only concern.
I think his point was on those single trails where that Troy Lee Trail and some of those trails, they're a single-use trail and people are hauling butt down them.
People on, on mountain bikes are hauling.
Right, people coming up.
The thing that we'll want to include probably is some sort of educational signage because if you are a hiker and you decide you want to walk up Troy Lee Trail, you probably get run over and hurt pretty bad. And we've seen close calls in the past on that. I think, you know, Dwight's, Dwight's comments were that e-motocycles are so much more powerful than the e-bikes, the Class 1 e-bikes.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I've ridden an e-bike up to the Dopplar, but I wouldn't even think about riding up a single track if I cared for my life. So the public needs to be really educated on that as we, as we do that. And whether, whether we do, you know, a restriction on e-motocycles, I think it's something we need to look into a little bit more to address. The security, obviously, along Skyline, I don't know how we're gonna address that other than primarily people stop leaving stuff visible in your car. But I would leave that to the chief of police to decide if there's something that could be done with, in relation to our cameras and tie it into our real-time information center so you could access it right away and follow that car or the people, people on foot leaving the scene. They can do it so quick with the real-time information center, but that's a good point. Also keep in mind that if Skyline Heights does go through and get developed, they're planning on, I think, 400 parking spots or something up much, much closer to the trail that would actually take parking off of foothill.
Mayor, if I may add, the electric motorcycles are already prohibited, the ones without the pedals, those are not allowed in the city. So we would not have to make any changes to have those prohibited, but the electric bicycles are allowed.
Right, but we still need, would need to do the educational side of it, I think, because while the bikes, the e-motocycles aren't allowed, they're traveling down our sidewalks every day, all day. And we need to, we need to get that information out to the public. And the parents of people who are buying, are buying these kids these, these really fast e-motocycles that they're riding on the sidewalks, they need to address that as well. Tom, did you have anything on Skyline? I think this is wonderful, I think it, it's all passive stuff, like we have been preaching ever since we purchased the land in 2020. It's all stuff that will make it a more pleasurable experience for the hiker and mountain biker and the walker. So I love it, so good job. All right, we have a motion here in a second.
The move.
Yeah, okay, Wes and anybody else? All right, Wes and Tony, please vote to review and adopt the Skyline Area Master Plan. I'm waiting, Sylvia, there we go. Okay, that passes 5-0. Moving on, Moses, you're up again, you're gonna talk a little bit about the automated time locks for park restroom sites.
Yes, good evening, I'm back on the restroom auto-locking system, so I'll jump kind of right into it. So today's ask is that the City Council provide direction on the installation of auto-door locking systems at nine park locations. Quick background, so the city has a total of 38 parks, 30 of which have parking lots. And we did discuss at our previous meeting about the gates. All parks do have restrooms. Security Service currently locks four of these sites and park rangers lock the other five sites. And the remaining others stay open in the evenings. Restroom auto-lock retrofit, so the existing door hardware can be completely retrofitted with this auto-locking system. Automatic programming would allow them to unlock and lock at closing and opening hours. The city has 30 restrooms with nine restroom buildings, nine restrooms which are manually locked each night for a total of 18 doors and an estimated cost of $1,850 per door and a total project cost of a little over $33,000. May 7th, we did bring forward, as I mentioned, some options for restroom locking and gate locking. We did get our direction on the gate locking, but we did get some asked questions on some additional information on these particular locks. We did do some research on these particular locks. And the automatic locks come with a manufactured-backed two-year warranty and expected battery life of five years.
Does this remind me, when the battery dies, do we have to replace the lock?
So we can't, assuming the lock is in good condition, we should be able to replace the battery, but after five years of locking, you know, the strikes are starting to wear or something, we may just opt to replace it.
And, okay, and there's no, it's replace only, you can't, you can't replace strikes or anything like that, like a normal dock you could lock, you could replace some hardware?
I believe because it's got a cylinder or some kind of electric mechanism, that probably all in one piece, so.
And the two-year warranty, is that like full replacement?
It's full replacement.
Minus the labor?
Yeah, and minor, minus like major vandalism if somebody.
Right.
Takes a bat to it or something, but if it's just a, you know, if it stops locking or striking, that will, that would be covered.
And the proposal is for our staff to install and retrofit, is that correct?
Yeah, we would do it ourselves, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no labor involved. So option one would be to stay status quo as we are right now. The process does work, it does not provide any additional security enhancements and it does have the highest cost annually at $96,000. Option two would be install the auto-locking system on the nine restrooms. Does have a cost savings and eliminates our contract services, frees up park rangers for needed duties. The cons are a risk of people potentially hiding in the restroom after hours. Locks can break and will need to be replaced. It has a $33,000 one-time cost, which would be a $63,000 net savings for the first year and a $96,000 savings thereafter that first year. Option three would be to utilize our park rangers to perform these services. Cost savings, it would be eliminate, would be able to allow us to eliminate our contractual services. Additional responsibilities would be added to our park rangers. And this equates to a $69,000 annual savings when we factor in the additional cost of our park rangers. So again, the ask tonight is that the council provide direction on the installation of our auto-locking systems at these nine park locations.
Thank you, Moses. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public on this?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, any questions or comments from my colleagues? What's your pleasure?
Can I go back to the options?
Sure.
I'm still concerned about that risk of people hiding in the restrooms after hours. Is there a way to still utilize our park rangers to swing by those nine parks and check? I mean, the reason why I like auto-locking and unlocking is so that all restrooms are accessible when they're supposed to be accessible for folks when they're accessing park hours. And we can't simultaneously do that with one park ranger going to all nine parks. So I like the idea of auto-locks, auto-unlocking in the morning. I don't like the idea of maybe some of our park patrons recognizing the pattern of when these restrooms lock at night in anticipation, finding themselves inside of one of those. So I would still want park rangers to check.
Moses, would, would we know if, if someone, say, you know, locked themselves in and they were to open it, would we get a notification that the door was, that lock was unlocked?
No, so it doesn't provide any, it just automatically locks and closes, or locks and unlocks, but it doesn't have any kind of notification.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If we determine that, or discover that we have a problem with a particular bathroom where there's somebody who's hanging out in there, we absolutely can send park rangers around to tackle that problem. It won't take us too long before we discover someone's trying to live in that at night and creating problems. So we can certainly address that on a case-by-case basis if it arises.
And if someone just happens to find themselves in there and they're not trying to stay the night, and they, you can always get out.
Yeah, correct. That's, well, that's what I was gonna say, too, is just we can see if a problem develops and then address it.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
So, option two?
Yep.
Option two.
Do we need to vote, Sylvia, or can we just tell you that a majority of us are on option two?
That just needs direction, we don't need a vote.
Okay, so we got, we got option two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there are no legislative matters tonight. Moving on to reports from boards and commissions, nothing from our library board of trustees, our planning and housing commission, a conditional use permit modification 2024-0002. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, would my colleagues like to take no action or set the item for review? Take no action. All right, moving on, Parks and Rec, nothing. Regional meetings, we have a few. Ms. Casillas, you're gonna give us an update on WR-COG General Assembly Meeting on June 12?
Is she gonna sing it?
It's me.
That's you.
It's me, okay. I just, I want to make note, city clerk, I'm so sorry, there's actually two meetings. There was the General Assembly on June 12th and then we had a regular WR-COG meeting on the 13th. And I just want to share, the General Assembly was really great. It's the, it's like a meeting party. We had Admiral William, oh my gosh, I totally bud, McRaven as our speaker. He was great, he's the famous admiral who made that speech at a Texas university graduation. It was called Make Your Bed, and he was, he was great, he was excellent. We voted on the budget for the agency for the next fiscal year and the executive team. The vice chair, or the chair is Brenna Denstedt for the next fiscal year, I'm vice chair, and Mike Lara from Boma is second vice chair, so we voted on that. And then the next day, we had our regular General WR-COG meeting. And at this meeting, Chris Gray, deputy director at WR-COG, likes to present transportation data for, for specific cities. And he shared transportation data for the city of Corona. I've already asked city manager Ellis if we can have him attend our meeting and share out specifically on, on our data. And what's interesting is that the common conception across councils in different cities is that the more economic development you can spur in your city, the more jobs you can produce, the fewer people you will have on the roads. And what the data show is that actually that doesn't, that doesn't really pan out. So no matter what, the cities in our WR-COG region, we have, folks will just go out of town to work even if, if, you know, your, your city is a job-rich city. For instance, Norco has more jobs than they have residents. And they still have more folks leaving the city than working in the city. So fun fact, in the city of Corona, our inflow and outflow of jobs every single day, we have about 11, we have 11,201 people who live in Corona and work in Corona. But every single day, 62,113 people leave Corona to work and 67,957 people come to Corona to work. So most of our travel inside the city is actually not job-related. So, you know, how do we internalize those externalities, right? How do we make better decisions as individuals? Because the prop, it's like that Taylor Swift song, you know, it's me, I'm the problem, right? Like, we are the reason why, it's not a job-related thing. So anyway, I've asked Chris Gray to come and give us a presentation. I know you all love presentations and data, so you're welcome.
Thanks, Jackie.
I did it especially for you, Jim.
Yeah, I appreciate that, all right. We have an update from Councilmember Speak on the Southern California Association of Government, SCAG Transportation Committee meeting from June 5th.
I love talking to Mr. Gray's whenever I see him anywhere, I always seek out and we geek out for a few minutes. This meeting was really, really quick, I mean, actually it wasn't quick, it was three hours, but it was two topics. High-speed rail, and it was all my colleagues from all around the Southern California region yelling at the High-Speed Rail Authority new, new CEO, she's a very nice woman. But I think the day after, all the funding got pulled. But there was also a presentation from the folks that are building the Brightline High-Speed Rail Project, and they're going straight ahead. Everything is in the median, I think a lot of people didn't realize that. This entire project, High-Speed Rail, is gonna be in between the median on the 15, with the exception of a yard in Adelanto and one in Las Vegas. And then they're making a connection that won't be necessarily high-speed rail between Adelanto and Rancho Cucamonga. So I'm hoping at some later date when the 5th, we can figure out how to do light rail on the 15, we can connect to that as well. So, long meeting, but no topics, that's it.
Good job, Wes. All right, next one is also from Councilmember Speak on our CTC meeting on June 11.
We were basically, it's, it was all budget, $1.4 billion budget that we're administering this year. We talked about the State Route 91 Implementation Plan, but I gave you all a preview of that last meeting. We adopted our capital improvement projects for 2025, which was $881 million distributed to local agencies, sorry, since 2009. And then we distributed money to WR-COG and Seavag, 1.1 million or 1.2 billion, million, I mean. Got a legislative update and we kicked off a $32 million award to Falcon Engineering to work on the Mid-County Parkway Segment 3. And then also awarded a contract to look at toll lanes on the 10, basically between Banning and Cabazon to assist in trying to move traffic through the pass there on the weekends. We didn't vote on the actual doing, you know, placing them, but we did vote on, on looking at additional studies to see what the configuration would look like. And then we made a bunch of grants for SB1, accepted money from Senator Schiff for $5 million and, sorry, and Congressman Calvert for the Southern Extension of the 15 project. Unfortunately, the CTC did not vote to fund that project, at least right now, so we'll go back to the drawing board. And either we'll self-fund, which will be $600 million. That's the, two additional lanes are from Kahalko into Highway 74 in Lake Elsinore. Pilot project and the ramp meter project, the smart freeway project in Rancho Cucamonga will be opening soon. They've already done some testing and we'll know in two years whether or not it's working well and then we'll bring it to, hopefully to Corona. That's it, thanks.
All right, Wes, you got one more, bud. Cal Cities Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee meeting on June 12.
It was my last meeting as the chair. We heard about fire insurance and what we can do about fire issues from Chief Malloy and Marietta, he had lots of compliments for Chief Young. I asked him how much money that Chief Young gave him and he said, not that much, so. But it was great because I got to, got to talk about some of that stuff. And then we talked about a project, housing innovation and private, public-private partnership project, a 3P project in Berkeley and a couple of the places where they were putting tiny houses on Houses of Worship Land. And seemed pretty well in these two places and very high success rate. That's it, thanks.
All right, thanks. Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards from the public on any other regional updates?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, let's go to city attorney comments and reports. Mr. Durlith, do you have anything? City manager, Mr. Ellis?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, future agenda items. So as a reminder, to get something put on the agenda from a single council member, it has to have the majority of, it has to have at least three. So we have a few items, or two items that have been requested by council members for, considered for a future agenda item. The first one is Save the Clock and Mr. Richens and Mr. Speak both decided that would be a great thing to talk about, so let's hear it.
Let me take it?
Go ahead.
So you may or may not know, there's been a clock that has been standing on the corner or hanging from the corner of Sixth and Main for 100-plus, 100-plus years. Thankfully, council member Dodario had it pulled and placed at Corporate Yard for safekeeping. But it's gonna need some preservation work and some money put into it to bring it back to its days of glory. So I wanted to make this very public, make it very council-esque and, and just allocate money and time to preserving the clock.
Okay, so what we would be asking the staff Okay, so what we would be asking the staff to do is to get back to us on what it would take to make this clock functional and where would we put it down the road, things like that?
Yep.
Okay, I support that. Anybody else?
Tony's skeptical. Oh, my God.
You love history. Ms. Casillas, any concerns with addressing? Okay, all right. So, that will be discussed at a future council meeting. Thank you. And then the final one, unless these guys decide to talk a lot, which I hope they don't, is a letter of support from the Corona Heritage Foundation for the National Register nomination of Corona Foothill Ranch. Well, Tom and Wes wanted to talk about this.
Yeah, I'll take that one. Corona Heritage Foundation, Corona Heritage Park, they are applying to have the buildings listed on their property on the National Register of Historic Places. They actually were successful in getting, or at least having a hearing. There'll be a hearing in, I think it's August, so they're asking for letters of support for their listing. That's it.
Okay. Any comments?
I just, what property?
Heritage Park.
Oh, it says-
The Foothill Lemon Company has turned into Heritage Park. So, it's where the company is now, in the current museum. So, they're old buildings from when it was a ranch.
Okay.
They've put the application process, and they've moved along quite well. So, now they're asking for a letter of support from the city and from us to be on the National Register of Historic Places.
Doesn't the city own Heritage Park?
No.
We donated it to that foundation?
No, go ahead, Wes.
The, and maybe Joanne will correct me if I'm wrong, but the developer donated it to the Corona Historic Preservation Society. Since we didn't have an operation arm, they formed the Corona Heritage Foundation to take the property. However, in the building or in the dock, the donation documents, if that foundation fails, it reverts to the city.
Okay. I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, I don't either.
I don't either, but so this agenda item is to come back to the council? Or it's to support the letter?
It's to come back to the, well, I don't know.
It's, we're asking staff to put together a letter of support, so.
So, then, oh, so then it's a letter?
They would come back to us and say, "I would take an hour and cost us much money," right? Jake?
Yeah. Can you repeat that last statement?
I was just going to say, we would, what we're asking is for staff to go put together, or put together the plan to do a letter of support with how long it will take and the cost associated.
So, typically, you do that for a policy issue that you really needed to study. For something as simple as a letter, I would suggest that you, if you all feel comfortable, we'll put the letter together.
I'm in favor of that.
We have faith in Dr. Mears, and she'll put a great letter together.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, sorry, we do have a speaker card for the future agenda items, for future agenda item 15.6.
Okay. Who, oh, that's Chris, okay. Yeah, but now you're right in front of us.
All right, it's a little intimidating. So, this is regarding taking some of the language out of the ordinance on our historic properties. And I kind of wanted to just talk from the heart of this really briefly that, you know, based on what happened with the depot and what's happened with the, we had a couple, a property maybe three years ago where they stripped everything out of it that was kind of historic, and we had to take them off of the registry because of that. And we've, I mean, we've had these challenges in the past as well as far as like historic preservation in the circle. We had a, we have a builder that just built some weird ADUs on his lot that were like very modern and did not match the area at all, and they're right next to two historic buildings. I think it's important from the perspective, not only of putting some teeth into this ordinance, but also from the perspective of we have to stop doing what's convenient. And we have to do, we have to make a commitment to real preservation in the city. And I think we can't do that if we say if you have any type of economically, any claim of economic inviability, that you can just knock down what's there. So, I really do think that that needs to be pulled. And I know that there will be the argument, the two arguments I'd like to address are, number one, well, we don't want to tell people what to do with their properties. I've already brought that up before. We were fine with doing that with Airbnb. Everybody voted to say you cannot run an Airbnb on your property. There's no difference here. It's the same exact thing. We're saying if you have a historic property and you were told it was a historic property when you bought it and you have the paperwork in front of you, there's no reason why you should think that you have the ability to tear it down without at least having it go through our new, our new board that we're having and come back to council. And I think that it's really important that we take that seriously and take that language out. And that's all I'll say on it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And that item will be on the agenda probably in July or August. So, that will be time for that discussion, I'm guessing. So, all right, do any of my colleagues have any final comments?
Yes, I do. So, I just wanted to give a quick shout out. I came across a Facebook group a couple of months back, and it's the Corona Over 40 Sunday Basketball Group. And they meet at Mountain Gate Park at 7:30 in the morning on Sunday. And I went, last Sunday was my first Sunday that I got to go play basketball because I've just been so busy on Sundays. But it is just a fantastic group. They play four-on-four half-court basketball, which is what I would consider fat guy-friendly and old guy-friendly. It was so much fun. We got to run three or four games before it got too hot, and then they got rid of it, or then it was, you know, games were over. But just to, just wanted to give them a quick shout out on their Facebook group. A lot of great guys that were there playing, all over 40. And it's just my speed, so that's a, it's a good win for Facebook.
I just had one thing. A month ago, this announcement would have been way different. And it would have started off with Starbucks will be building its 16th new location on Sixth Street. They are, they are, work currently, or we're the high bidder for the Silver Dollar Pancake House. And they had, their plans were to build a drive-through and knock down the Silver Dollar. So, thankfully, at the last minute, Mark and Paula Vogel- -building for it to be saved. And they're very in favor of making sure it stays saved. But this could have worked out way differently if Starbucks had actually made the purchase. Because we have nothing in our, and our plan, as, you know, Chris kind of noted there, we have nothing in there that would have saved that building. And frankly, the city couldn't have bought it because what we do is we can't lease it back to a private owner. So, we came really close to losing another, basically the oldest continuing, continually operating restaurant in the city of Corona. And just because we, you know, somebody was going to bid more, and it was family passed away because they didn't want the property. They put it up for sale. They didn't really want to sell it to Starbucks, but Starbucks is offering the most. So, I'm happy to say that the building will be there for a long while. But it just tells me how precarious other properties, you know, could be in our city, too, so.
Yeah, certainly want to say thank you, publicly say thank you to Mark and Paula Vogel. They're great citizens of the community, and they saved the Silver Dollar. They didn't do it for recognition, but please give it to them. And then, I don't know if anybody's going to talk about Claros, but Claros had a grand opening. Four of the more dedicated council members were there. And so, we all showed up, minus the Italian, and it was the grand opening. And so, we all showed up. And then some people had concerns about the building plan-check process, but Mayor Steiner dressed them like a gem, like a gem. And they didn't say one swear word, but he appropriately blamed Councilmember DeDario for the time it took. So, it all worked out. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next meeting of our city councils, July 2nd, 2025. This meeting is adjourned.